How do I do this, sir? Let's go. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for attending our meeting of our City Council for today, February 4th. The time now is 3:00 PM, and we're going to go ahead and do our call to order. Let the record indicate that on the dais now, we are councilmember Solomon and councilmember Cobb. We're going to start with our invocation. With us, we've got Mr. John Hahn. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, it's council. I'm just so thankful to be able to be here and pray over you all today. We're so excited to be part of this community. Born and raised here, love this community, and we just want you to know that at Encounter City Church, we just really want to be here to support. So, we want to open this line of communication up so that if you need us in any way, that we can be of love in this community, we're here for that. So, thank you so much. So, let's go to the Lord in prayer, please. Dear Heavenly Father, I just thank you for this opportunity. I thank you for this council. I thank you for the wisdom that you give them each and every day to run this city. Thank you for just letting them have the strength to step up and fill the gaps. As a church, we're recalled to come into community with our leaders and to fill those gaps. So, we just ask you to use us to show love, unity, and wisdom in this city. Lord, we lift up the leaders here. We lift up the people in this room, that whatever they have to talk about today, whatever's on this agenda, that it honors and glorifies you in all that we do. But just know that love conquers all. If there's anything that is a struggle, just use that struggle to help us. Prune us, Lord, prune us today to come closer to you. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
And now, we'll have our invocation led by, I'm sorry, Pledge of Allegiance led by councilmember Boyd.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the civil, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to move for an approval of the agenda. Councilmember Boyd.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
We've got a motion from councilmember Boyd to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councilmember Segarra. All in favor? Please vote yes. Any opposed, vote no. All right. It looks like we've got a vote of four in favor of approval of the agenda. Next, we're going to move on to our presentations. Keep in mind, council, we've got three minutes, three times each, on each of these presentations, if you have any questions. We're going to begin with PR 25-002. Receive a Hill Country Transit District update. Mr. Darrell.
Well, I'm sorry. We had Darrell on the agenda, but this is Raymond Suarez here for Hill Country Transit District.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, Raymond Suarez, General Manager of Hill Country Transit District. I'm here to share some good news about Hill Country Transit District. Hendrickson Transportation Group, who I work for, was hired to, through a contract, to provide general management services and to chart a path forward with recommendations on how we would transform the transit district. So, before I share a little good news, I want to share kind of where we've been, so to provide some context. A consultant was hired before we came in as the program managers to manage the system, and these were the highlights of what we were hearing from stakeholders. That the service was unreliable. As you are probably aware, the service tended to run one hour in one direction. So, if you had to go in the opposite direction, it could take you up to two hours. There was a lack of equity across the system. Wasn't really meeting the community needs, is what we were hearing. I'm sure it was serving some needs, but not all the community needs. I think there was a primary focus on seniors and disabled, and a lot of folks felt like the transit system was primarily for that purpose. And there was poor service coverage, inadequate weekday services in some of our member cities. They had a, literally in Harker Heights, in the middle of the day, there was no service. So, they received service in the morning and the afternoon, but not in the middle of the day. It didn't operate late enough. There wasn't technology readily available on the vehicles. There was a poor route design. The service was too sparse. And we wanted to diversify our funding sources. There was lack of clarity on the operational performance. There was a general feel that communication was not great between the transit district and our stakeholder communities. The performance reports that were being produced weren't useful to make management decisions, to serve as business intelligence. Ridership needed to be tracked more closely. We'd been on multiple years of declining ridership. There was a general feeling that mobility was important for seniors, low-income residents, students, and commuters across the board. Folks, I think, were really focused on more regionalism as opposed to local. We needed to serve both, obviously. And there was a general feeling that access to medical care required long trips, and that Colleen and Temple were large economic and recreation hubs and needed to be better served. And there was interest in bringing Fort Cav into the regional system because it represents such a large part of our community. And there was a desire from Fort Cav to have better mobility on the base. So, that's kind of where we were. The board met. We walked through a strategic visioning session with them. We came up with eight strategic work streams. One was to really try to understand how the district was structured. We had 14 members, nine counties, and five cities. And then, of course, Fort Cav, which is a city in and of its own, so really six cities. But the majority of the transit district services were really focused from a board representation, primarily on the rural districts, even though the majority of the ridership and need was coming from the cities. So, we embarked on a process. I'll fill you in where we are with that. But all of these green checks are areas where we've made significant progress. And we have a little manate work where we're still working on things. But on all eight strategic work streams with regard to growth and planning and making the system more effective and efficient, and funding sources that are more sustainable and leveraging technology, we've made significant progress on all of those. We implemented service September of this year in the five cities, and we're making great measured progress. Now that the foundation has been laid with the infrastructure and the technology and the systems, we've spent a lot of time working with staff to retrain them. I think they're happier than they've ever been. They're energized. I invited several of them to this meeting, and they all declined because they were too busy working on stuff, and they literally said, hey, I'd rather work on this than go to the council meeting. My apologies for that. But I wanted them to tell the good story about how they're feeling about things, and hopefully, in the future, we plan on coming quarterly to provide briefings. You'll see more of them, probably less of me. I'll sit in the seats there and let them present. I think they're excited about doing that. And then, we're really going to focus on reporting and transparency, putting things on our website so you can go and see, anybody will be able to see how your performance is doing across the system. Just as, again, a reference point, we came before council last year, and we showed this chart, and I think it's a good anchoring reference point for where we're going. So, the red line is typically where planners across the industry would say, if you're left of the red line, you're not performing well. You probably need to do something different. If you're right, you're meeting the minimum standard, but there's things that we can do better. And over the course of many years, and COVID and a lot of other things, ridership really declined across the system. And I'm glad to say that we've really made a difference. This is a primary reason. If you look at all these little spaghetti noodles, this was how the system was designed before. So, if you got on any one of these routes, again, it would go in one direction. It ran, the frequency was one hour. So, if you missed a bus, you could wait two hours. And literally, to get from Cove to Temple and back could be a half a day journey. We're now running commuter service every 30 minutes at high frequency. The average wait time is 10 minutes on the microtransit. So, you can imagine how big of improvement. I was just hearing from folks in the audience about how much they feel the service has improved, which is always a good thing to hear. Typically, in transit, you tend to hear negative reports, but a lot of it's been positive. Again, looking at the history for Colleen, we were carrying about 146,000 passengers in '22. And this is really where the board wanted us to go. The mission, the service, and the experience. They wanted to improve mobility through an intermodal transportation system, to grow ridership, to promote economic growth and sustainability, and really mix up the type of trips. It's not just for seniors and disadvantaged folks. It's for job access, medical care, entertainment, recreations, services of all modes. They wanted to improve accessibility and the extent or the reach to open it up. So, with these routes, there were bus stops. If you didn't live within a quarter of a mile of that bus stop, you were going to hoof it for a while. And then, many times, there was not even a shelter there. So, you were in the rain or the heat or whatever, waiting on a bus, and you didn't know where the bus was. So, not a great customer experience. All of that leads to kind of where we were. So, from a service expense perspective, we want to enhance the equity, enhance the hours and availability of the system, and improve productivity. And then, from the customer experience, we wanted them to have information at the palm of their hands so they knew where their vehicles were. If they had any trouble, they could immediately press a button, talk to somebody in our dispatch or call center, and get a real human being talking to them to improve the customer experience. We wanted to reach out to our stakeholder communities, engage you more, and come back to you with requests for expansion or questions that you may have, but be here often so that you are hearing of the value that we're providing, and we're providing an open dialogue and soundboard so we know how your community is being served and what changes we might need to make in the future. Wayfinding is basically how do you use the system? The technology is providing very rich data about pickup and drop-offs and heat maps and all kinds of business intelligence that we're using to improve the system. We make small improvements weekly to make sure that your customers and your community members are being served as best we can. And then, as I mentioned, wait times. The way you look at a system and how well it works is, how long am I having to wait? What is my travel duration? Is it safe? Is it friendly? All of these things were what we set off to do. This is a new and improved system from Cove to Temple. There are major hubs by the dark blue dots in each one of the member cities. Nolanville, a portion of that is in the urbanized UZA, the Colleen Urbanized UZA. We've had a stop historically. We felt it important to have one there. But we have also a stop at Fort Cavazo. So, not only are we carrying roughly 230,000 passengers, they have access onto the commuter system and access to each and every one of your cities so they can connect anywhere in these areas that are served with microtransit and come in and out of the military installation as they please. So, this has been very successful. The ridership on the commuter isn't where we want it yet, but let's be fair. It's been four months, and typically, it takes up to a year before you see the full maximization of the system. So, I'm very encouraged that we're seeing ridership growth. And this is what we've heard, and this is what we're seeing on the performance now. It's highly reliable and resilient. It's highly available. Access across the system has improved. It provides equity and accessibility across the entire system. There's growing community use and diversity in the types of trips that we're serving. We can see that by where people are going. They're going to Walmarts and all the retailers, not only in your city, but across all the cities. We have a high-visibility dashboard so we can see things like drop calls and cancellations. And we can literally communicate directly with a driver. We can also take a trip and move it from one driver to the other. We have fully integrated Uber, so if we need to push a trip over there, Uber gets dispatched, they get picked up. We settle the cost. It's actually worked extremely well to help us reduce our costs, so they've been a great partner. And in the case of Temple, your frequency went from an hour and two hours down to less than 15 minutes. It's averaging about 10 to 12 minutes. What a huge difference over what it was before. I wasn't sure we'd have that level of performance, but that's pretty impressive for a city of your size. And then, Fort Cav, as I mentioned, deployed a system, but they also are paying about a half a million dollars a year into the transit system for the commuter access so that their folks have the benefit in commuting across the entire system. We're in our second year with them. They're already looking to find funding sources for next year, and that partnership continues to grow and be successful. As a matter of fact, we've had other military bases around the country take note of what's happened here, and there's a lot of interest across the nation to do similar things. This was the first one of its kind anywhere in the world for a U.S. military installation, and it has exceeded expectations and continues to do so. We're improving communication in a lot of ways. With the customer, they have their phone. They can text back and forth. They can call us directly. We can push messages. If there's an outage or any kind of concern, we can notify customers in advance or real-time as things happen. And we're getting, they can provide driver performance. Hey, this driver did a great job, or I was unpleased with this driver, and allows us to immediately communicate with our drivers to address any performance issues. And just to speed up here, the last piece of this is in March. On March 1, we will have the four remaining counties all connected in with microtransit at the county hubs with a commuter, rural commuter, that connects to the commuter system. So, for the first time in the history of the transit district, we'll have a full regional system, which is really exciting. Very excited about that. So, on the system-wide, we've been very busy working to divest ourselves of five counties. They've been great partners, a long history. But there were five counties that really, when you looked at the trips and where they were going, they were actually going outside of the county. So, we worked with the Federal Transit Administration, TechDOT, and all the county members to design a new approach, which was to have San Saba, Hamilton, and Mills go to the Central Texas Rural Transit District, Lano, to the Capital Area Transit System because they're basically attached to them, and then Mason going to Concho Valley, which would leave at the hop, Colleen, Temple, Belton, Cove, Harker Heights, Bell County, Mylum County, Corial County, and Lampasses. The majority of those trips come into your cities for goods and services and entertainment and such, and go back. So, I think this is going to make for a much better, more clean system. And what we're hearing from the counties, imagine trying to negotiate a 14-member divorce. That's what we went through. That's what we're going through. But I will tell you, and there's members here that have engaged in those conversations. It's been professional. Everybody, I believe, is very pleased with the outcome of this. I've even had TechDOT come back and say that this is the smoothest one they've ever been through. So, I think a tip of the hat to all the partners here that continue to work to make the region better. The final negotiation included some assets like vehicles and other things, titles, deeds, all those things TechDOT is managing. We're divesting ourselves of those assets that are supporting those counties as they go to the new transit districts. All that should be settled by the end of the month. Again, this is a major milestone. I think it sets up the region, this area, this region, for continued growth and support. All the infrastructure is in place. We're excited about continuing forward. And this allows us to be more efficient and focused as we move. So, from an operation redesign, so that's kind of the very large area. We're looking more specific to the internal operations of the hop. We redesigned the entire transit system. We purchased and replaced all of the fleet that's beyond its useful life, and that was about 90% of the fleet. We negotiated parking lot agreements so that we can actually, the vehicles are going to sleep where they need to wake up in the morning to move people as opposed to deadheading them all the way back to a central location. That'll help us continue to drop our costs. There's been extensive travel training, and we continue to do that. We've hired a significant number of drivers, which is employing more people in your region. And we, at the same time, have reduced our overall cost two years in a row. We plan on continuing to do that. We deployed the regional commuter service. We've significantly advanced our technology and automation and business intelligence. We've consolidated administration, operations, and maintenance in Belton, successfully combined non-emergency medical, demand response, fixed route, all into one efficient system, which is your microtransit and regional commuter bus. We employed the first full year of service on Fort Cav. We're in our second one. We redesigned the rural service. We removed hundreds of bus shelters in your cities to make them safer. And we've eliminated, in many cases, the need for access ramps and sidewalks to be built around bus stops because they're, with these virtual pickup and drop-offs, we can make them happen in locations that are more convenient for your customers. And we have scanned thousands of records, tens of thousands of records, and removing all of that from San Saba to our location in Belton so that we can operate more efficiently. And then, from a technology perspective in this year, we changed out our financial systems, our banking and accounting management, our payroll systems. We migrated to cloud enterprise for resiliency. We upgraded our telecom backbone. We went enterprise-wide with a new app stack that includes back office, rider app, dispatch, call center, real-time BI. We integrated electronic fare media. We automated brokering of trips with Uber, which is a, it's not an industry first, but it's bleeding edge. We upgraded our fleet fuel system. We did a switch over to FirstNet, which is a telecom provider, which will more or less guarantee resilient connectivity. And we've made our system much safer by employing cameras in our fuel supervisors' vehicles. This is just a little bit of a snapshot of the regional ridership growth. You can see not only ridership, but on-time performance is in the high 90s or mid-90s. And typically, on fixed route service, we were reaching about a 65% on-time performance. That means the other 35%, you had people at stops looking, wondering where the bus was. Ridership is growing on a steady pace. Overall, ridership is up about 15 to 20%, which is really good considering we're only four months into it. I expect this to continue to grow as we move forward. And so, what's next is on February 27th will be our final 14-member board. Before we split, we'll elect new board officer positions for vice chair and chair. And in our March board meeting, we'll start charting a new path forward, probably go through a strategic planning discussion with the reconstituted board. Smaller board, more efficient, more focused on this local, regional area. And then, we'll continue to evaluate proposed enhancements around expansion requests that have come from our different member cities. I really want to take a hard look at van pools. I think that would help a lot for our businesses. It's probably the most economical approach to delivering pooled trips. And we want to investigate a TMA or Transit Management Association, which would allow your enterprise to form a board focused on input to improve transit. It also gives them the ability to raise their own money and invest in things like van pools and other things. These TMAs have been very successful around the country. In North Texas and Central Texas, around Austin and other places, TMAs are well-used. And then, we really are going to focus on enhancing our community engagement. We're going to establish a social services roundtable so that we are constantly hearing from folks that use the service quite a bit. And then, as I mentioned before, we're going to be before you, hopefully, more often, if you invite us back. Based on the length of this presentation, you may not want to have me here quarterly, but I'd sure like to be here to brief you quarterly. And that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you for that presentation. Council, do we have any questions for the gentleman? We'll start with councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for Tim.
Councilmember Adams, just one moment, please. Just for the record, I'd like the record to reflect that councilmember Cobb arrived at 3:04 to the dais, and councilmember Solomon is also present with us as of 3:05. Thank you. Go ahead, councilmember Adams.
Thanks. Thank you, sir. I, you know, I was not a 100% fan of the switch, but I've kind of convinced me over the last few months. I see this success, and you know, there's always a but. And that is, I know when last you spoke, we talked about looking at other expansions as far as areas, but I've had residents ask me about later times. I don't know, are you able to track any requests that are after your normal service hours? And if there are requests after normal service, how can they be serviced? And then, your future, it's three questions. And then, your future plans, do you anticipate any increase after the 6:30 time frame?
So, we operate until 8:00 PM.
Okay, thanks.
The other thing we did is we expanded our operating hours. We used to operate 12 hours a day. We're operating 14 hours a day. We used to operate on Saturdays, but Saturdays tend to be less, you have a lot of cost and less ridership. So, that doesn't mean that, a lot of transit districts, as they grow, they add Saturday and Sunday, knowing that their performance, their efficiency, their effectiveness isn't quite as high. But if you want to have accessibility to your entire system, you would do that. So, the typical desire of almost every anywhere USA is longer hours, Saturday service, Sunday service. But when you tend to look at those, they drop off after 8:00 PM significantly. And Saturday and Sunday are less used, obviously, because there are a lot of people using it for various trips during the week. All of that is possible. What I had suggested was a little patience. Let's let the system tell us. Let's use actual empirical data from the system to tell us what we have available to us. Now, what we had said originally is... Now, what we had said originally is that we were hoping to hit a target of 30-minute, less than 30-minute, or average 30-minute wait time. We're at a 10-minute wait time, 15-minute wait time. So there's opportunity. The only issue with higher wait times is you tend to have fewer people using the system because they don't want to wait as long. The benefit of having TNCs integrated, TNCs are like Uber and Lyft, integrated into our system, is it allows us to have some lower-cost options. If, it's totally up to the rider every time they take a trip, are you willing to allow Uber or Lyft to use this, to pick you up or drop you off? Some people don't feel comfortable with it. It's at no additional cost to the end user, but it allows us to focus on ensuring that our wait times are as low as possible. So I'm here to report happily that the system is doing great. We're only four months into it. And clearly, if the direction of counsel is you like to start exploring some expansion opportunities, then we can do that with the understanding that the further you go out, the less frequency you may have because you don't have the density out, further out. But I think we're in a good position. Over the next couple of months, we should have a very good understanding of what, like six months into it, we should have a better understanding of what the variations are in trip patterns during holidays and when folks are in school, when they're not in school. I would also say that while we've seen a 15% to 20% increase in ridership, that's during the four months that are probably the lowest ridership across the entire 12-month period because you have the holidays, you tend to have bad weather days, which we've had more than our share this time around. And so I'm expecting that January, February, March, April, we'll get a really good read on where the performance is. And I'm happy to come back and share more details so we can get more specific about how we might want to expand the system. So far, I've had two requests, expand in the southerly direction, and then potentially some expansion around supporting events in partnership with Fort Cav.
Yep.
And there was one more other, one question since I'm already on that line is, what about service to the airport? Well, we have the service to the airport already. And can Fort Cavazos folks pick up service and connect outside of the military installation? And that's already working. So we just need to do a better job of communicating and marketing, and that's in our future plans starting in February. We're bringing in an expert in microtransit mobility, marketing, communications, to really take advantage of the system, to really max it out.
Yeah, thanks. And the last, my last question is, so considering all that, for those people that like, that have those after 8 o'clock jobs, are they able to use the app to use the Uber or the TNC connection, or it shuts off at that point?
It shuts off because the reason we're able to use Uber or TNCs is the Federal Transit Administration allows us to use federal funds if it is complimentary to mass transit. It's not to be used as a substitute for it because they tend to be single rides. And contractually, we obligate them to make it a shared ride system so they can't deny another request for a ride. But typically, you're carrying one or two or three people because the size of the vehicle is much smaller. So the FTA, the way they worked it is, it has to be, it has to be an adjunct to your fixed route system. If we're not running fixed route, we can't run Uber. Or we can, you just have to pay with it with local funds, and that's not a good use of funding.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, do we have any additional questions before we move on? Councilmember Cobb.
Hi, sir. Welcome back.
Hello.
Nice seeing you. I love the improvements, the success of the program.
Thank you.
However, I'm still concerned about those vouchers. With the vouchers, with the Lyft, and with the Uber, can persons use them?
So there's no vouchers in our system?
There's no vouchers.
No, ma'am. So you pick up your phone, once you've set up your account, you request a ride, and it's either going to be us or it's going to be Uber that picks you up. The transit district decides to dispatch Uber, and it just picks you up like it's one of our vehicles. That's the other part of this. It's very seamless, and it doesn't matter where you are, who you are, or what your ride request is. If you're in a, if you need a assisted vehicle that has mobility assistance with a wheelchair, it'll dispatch one of our vehicles because Uber and Lyft don't provide that. So there's no voucher system at all.
So every customer has an account that they're using a telephone, like the free clinics and the different clinics that whom had vouchers that were giving it to patients so they could have rides. Those are completely gone.
They're gone, but they can provide, they can buy discounted passes from, and we have many, as I mentioned, social service-type entities that will call, purchase, discounted fare, and they can give those to the clients and use them.
So discount passes, not vouchers?
Correct.
Okay. Second question is the safety. The safety of persons that use the vehicles, the IHOP, what is your safety plan?
We're required by the Federal Transit Administration to administer a safety program. We're required to have a chief safety officer that reports directly to me. He's a very competent, qualified individual. We have training programs. We do drug alcohol testing, year-round training on safety. We have cameras. We do post-incident accident reports. It's, in my opinion, the highest level of safety. And then Health and Human Services, when you provide non-emergency medical transport, has even another layer of safety which is required for us. Now, you bring up a good point. Uber and Lyft don't require that. And nationally, there's language being put out that might take our ability to use these TNCs away. I don't think that'll happen because the efficiency is so high in using it, and we're getting better productivity for the nation, for transit services. But the customer has to elect every trip whether they would accept an Uber or Lyft. So the client gets to decide whether they feel that using that type of service is safe for them. I mean, I'm not asking anybody else to use it, but I use it all over the country. I've never had an incident.
So if anything occurs during the time that a passenger is on one of those vans or the Uber Lyft, there is nothing that can immediately happen?
Oh, there's something that can happen all the time.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, there's accidents, there's people that will trip or fall, you know, getting in or out of vehicles. I mean, that happens with our personal vehicles. I've shut my finger and all kinds of stuff into my own car. So there's things that can happen. We're in a public space, but we have the appropriate insurance, we have cameras, we have the right incident process to escalate. We do risk management, just I'm sure like the city does as well, to ensure that we do our very best job in managing risk.
I just wanted to ensure that everyone knows that it's safe with the risk management and the things that are in process because it's hard for me to get on the bus if I don't know it's safe.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that when I sit down, that someone sees me, they knows what's, they know what's going on because you don't know what everybody's caring of the mindset of everyone that gets on those vans.
Sure. Well, I really appreciate that question. I don't, I don't answer, I can't remember anybody asking me that before in a public setting. And we're happy to share our, we do with our board, our safety, performance, accidents per 100,000 miles. FTA requires us to report it, and I lay eyes on it often to make sure that if we start having incidents, the first thing you need to do is evaluate your processes and training and retrain people to make sure that we don't have those incidents, and that's what we do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Looks like you do have a few more questions. So Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protim. And great presentation, you know, and congratulations because I think this is, excuse me, great, great thing for our community. And as you, as you talk about, excuse me, of all the great things. Get that cleared up there. Of all the great things that you've done and the advancement, you know, the buses, just to clear, we don't, you don't have those big buses anymore, right?
Correct.
How about the bus?
We do on the commuter, we do on the commuter route. That's on the highway, I mean, major highway.
And then, is there anything going to be done with the bus stops, or are those changing?
The majority of the bus stops have been, the shelters have been removed in both our cities. I was really impressed with our staff. Hundreds of bus stops and shelters have been removed. They're not, because they're not necessary.
Yeah.
We're picking people up either in front of their homes or at the corner of an intersection where it's safe. It's virtual. Also, in shopping centers and areas where people are going, whether it be a community center, we're safely picking people up in parking lots because the vehicles are smaller so they can dwell longer, make sure they get the assistance they need, and then we just get back into general traffic. The other major thing without those buses, so large buses tend to run over curbs, they break curbs, they create potholes because they're heavy, they slow down traffic, they potentially increase accidents because vehicles are trying to get around them. And you think I would be a spokesperson for transit, but, and I am, so I don't want to badmouth them. It's just that they're very large and they're hard, especially in densely populated areas. It just, it creates safety issues and stress on drivers. And I think every, even the drivers have said they enjoy this service much more driving it because it's a more nimble, customer-friendly environment.
The main thing I wanted to ask is the finances. I know that all that comes at a cost, obviously. Are you guys looking at at least breaking even, or how does that work?
So transit really never breaks even in this country. It's subsidized heavily by the Federal Transit Administration and, to lesser extent, state funding from TechDOT. But I will say that we've gone two years without increasing any cost to the cities. And I'm premature because we haven't started our budget process, but I'm, I am, I believe that we're actually going to be saving more money with the future. So this is an incredible thing. We've hired more people, we have more service on the street, and we're lowering our costs to doing business. Now, I will say with a caveat, all five cities are still not funding to the level to match every federal and state dollar. We have benefited from non-emergency medical over the years because once we perform that trip, we get the money from Health and Human Services, it goes into our general fund, and that's been helping. However, those funds continue to reduce. So if we want to maximize our federal and state dollars, the cities need to think about matching every dollar that we spend. So I, there's two ways to deal with that. Come every year or every six months and ask for more money and more money and more money like most people do. This is our second year, we have not asked for any money, and we've still given raises, and our health insurance is lower than it has been, by 20% lower than it has been in the past. And our employees seem to be healthier, they're using the healthcare much more, they're happier, they're safer. I'm really hoping that we can come in this year and actually not ask for any increases for the third year in a row. So that's where we are for now. You would think our costs have gone way up, but I don't think they have. We're only four months into it, so I really need to look at the analytics before I let my lips overload my.
Well, and I appreciate that because that's kind of where I was heading at, you know, what is it going to look for this city? Because I know that we did, I think it was over a million dollars of our COVID funds that we did, was it?
We did. We're at about $600,000 a year now.
$600,000. And, you know, that's, that was just kind of, my question is see if that's going to go up or down. But you mentioned that the board is going to split, and you're going to, it's going to be a separate board, right? When you guys set up a separate board, do you guys create a new charter, new financials or any, how does that work?
That's the discussion we have to have with our board. We'll go back and look at our bylaws and our enabling legislation. I don't think that we're going to have any significant changes in our enabling legislation, but our bylaws we'll need to revisit. The budget will be cast with five less counties. We've already worked with FTA and TechDOT so we know how much money, roughly how much money is going to be leaving the transit district. That does not impact your city because your urbanized funds come directly from the FTA or their FTA funds come through TechDOT, and it's a separate block of grant money, and we keep those separate. So it shouldn't impact your financials.
Well, the one thing I was going to mention, and maybe it's something that you guys can do new, because I know that before your budget cycle ended, I think it was what, one or two months prior to ours, and we always had that challenge where you guys didn't know what you were getting because our budget is in September, and you guys had it, I think, if I'm not mistaken, June, July? I don't know when your budget.
It was September. We've moved it to calendar year to match your audit.
Okay, and that was my question, you know, to kind of align it more with what we're doing because it was always a challenge there.
We are going to, we're projecting to have our budget, preliminary budget around April or May so that it ties in with the counties and several cities start doing their budgets early. And then we'll just, we'll partner with you until you're finished with your budget. But we should be able to provide forecasts of what we think the costs are going to be for the city moving forward. Again, we need to have discussions during that timeframe with the reconstituted board about things like expansion and other, you know, other options, weekends, later hours, desire to expand the service area. All of that comes with potential risk of cost.
And if you're going to do quarterly too, that'd be a good idea to kind of see where we're at so we don't wait for the last minute. It's like, you know what? Because one year, I remember, it was like dropped on us and it had increased quite a bit, and it's like, where did this come from?
I'd like to say that was before my time.
That was before your time.
Not going to be on my watch.
I was on the council when that happened, and we took a big one, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Segarra. Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protim. I want to say, of course, I'm on that board, and I just want to commend you for all the work and your team, which I'll do. I know it's a lot of work in terms of reconstructing and what we're doing in, like you said, divorcing some other counties. My question is, on the feedback from the citizens, how do you, how do y'all get that in terms of, and I'm talking in particular Colleen.
We get that in multiple ways. One is when a driver drops an individual off, they have the ability to immediately provide feedback if they don't, if they don't like what the driver did or there was an issue. So directly from every customer, they have the ability to provide a response. They can call our customer call center. We log those, and then we track the time that it takes for us to give them a response. Some are not always easy, and we have to investigate what happened and things of that nature. So that's the second way. The other way is through council members, feedback from individuals, people in the stakeholder community. There's actually a fourth. Sometimes we don't find out something until it shows up in the media, and we typically will call that person directly and find out if there's something that we can do to solve whatever problem might be there. So it comes in multiple ways. Each one has, some are more direct, so it's easier to address them. Sometimes it's, well, somebody said the vehicle left them. Well, what day was it? I don't know. Well, what vehicle number was it? I don't know. So it's really hard to track that down. But we take each customer's requests, like if it's the only request we have, and we try to deal with it individual by individual.
Yeah, that's good. And the reason why I asked, I wanted to know the response, you know, are you getting more positive feedback with this new system?
So customer satisfaction from all of our different portals of input that I just described is over 95%. Typically, transit, you don't, you don't hear too much good, it's usually bad. So to have a satisfaction indices of 95% or higher is extraordinary. In some of the other cities, it's 97%. You know, it just, it depends on the week and what's happening and inclement weather and all kinds of things, just like trying to drive in traffic and predicting traffic. But I'm very, very satisfied from a national perspective. I think we're right there as to what should be expected in this type of system. There's been an extraordinary amount of change. I'm sorry to list all that out, but I take pride in it because most corporations would never try to undertake what we did. System change, just try to change one system is hard. Financial system, technology, train- Financial system, technology, training customers and employees and transforming everything in, in, in a year or less. And to see the level of performance, it, it, it's been great. It really has been great. I'm, I'm very pleased and happy for the communities that we serve. And that's ultimately our, our va, our value proposition is to provide value back to our communities, to make them more livable. Make them more accessible, have equity. And I would say your investment, your trust has been well placed.
Well, again, I want to thank you for what you and your team has done and to help the citizens of Colleen.
It's our pleasure, thank you.
Thank you.
Indeed, and I echo that sentiment as well. So it looks like that concludes your questions for this. I'm sorry, excuse me, Councilmember Adams.
Thanks again, sir. I, um, again, I appreciate what you guys done so far. I did, um, want to, I know you mentioned about improving your marketing, uh, because I think that will go a long way, especially for those areas that don't even realize that we have restructured the HOP.
Yes, sir.
And so do you anticipate an increase in budget or, or a more robust marketing plan?
A more robust marketing plan? We have a expert joining us on February 10th that has, um, a tremendous amount of experience. They've worked at Greyhound, they've worked at, um, a multi-billion dollar market cap company that, that does micro transit, mobility. Uh, they put transit programs, uh, me, looking at all facets of communication. Uh, and, and we need to do it often, often, often. Even Coca-Cola, McDonald's market all the time and they're, they're some of the largest companies out there because they know that things need to be top of mind and the frequency of the communication needs to be way up there. It's not a one-time thing. So that's to me our, our weakest point, uh, and it should become a strength in the very near future.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Thank you, sir, for your presentation.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it. Well, we're going to move on to our work session. Uh, keep in mind, council, we've got three minutes, three times each on this one. I'm going to turn it over to Madam Secretary.
RS 25016, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a funding agreement with Families in Crisis Incorporated for operating expenses for the Friends in Crisis program in the amount of $350,000.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ms. McNair.
Thank you. I do want to note that I am, uh, joined by the leadership of Friends in Crisis, their chief executive and, um, operating officers, uh, William Hall and Suzanne Armour, who are here to answer any questions that may come up. So background, Families in Crisis, also known as FIC, provides emergency shelter and supportive services to persons experiencing homelessness through several programs, including but not limited to Domestic Violence Shelter, Emergency Solutions Grants Shelter Program, and Colleen Homeless Shelter, also known as Friends in Crisis. Um, in fiscal year 2024, uh, the city of Colleen received a letter from FIC requesting funding assistance for the Friends in Crisis program. On November 28th of 2023, which was fiscal year 24, with the adoption of ordinance 23072. ARPA funds were formally appropriated to accommodate FIC's request. The term of the agreement was March 1st through September 30th of 2024. All requirements of the agreement were met. In this current fiscal year, um, we have received a letter from FIC stating that challenges with funding continued and without assistance will force the organization to cease operations of its homeless shelter, Friends in Crisis, starting in March through September of 2025. The amount requested is $350,000, which covers expenditures for shelter, services and operations. Um, this is a overview of all of the funding for the Families in Crisis organization, which includes the Friends in Crisis program. And this is, uh, for 2022 through 2025. Our focus here, um, is more or less the third row for homeless shelter, which shows how much money they had of the total, um, amount of revenue that they had for each year, which for most years was approximately 10% of their revenue went towards the homeless shelter operations. Of the, uh, funds for the homeless shelter, this breaks down where those sources came from. The Emergency Solutions Grant, which is awarded, uh, through HUD, either through, uh, a participating jurisdiction, jurisdiction or on the state. The Temporary Emergency Relief Fund, um, those are funds from FEMA. Community Development Block Grant, again, ARPA, I'm sorry, again, uh, HUD. ARPA is through the US Treasury, VA contract through, uh, Veterans Administration. Um, this is other funding they have requested, uh, prior to coming to the city for assistance. And the breakdown is, uh, showing under the amount, the amount that they actually requested, the amount that they receive. The item with the asterisk shows the breakdowns, uh, of the 289, $89,000, how much they are able to use towards shelter, um, operations based on the funding that they receive. And then the VA contract bid, um, it's just based on the number of bids that they will have there. This, um, is just to speak to, uh, an existing agreement that we have, the last agreement we had with them, they completed September of 2024. Um, we still are in an active agreement for the public facility where the city awarded its block grant monies, uh, for the purpose of a CDBG eligible public facility improvement to an existing structure for use as a homeless shelter. This is the breakdown of the investment of the city at that time. Approximately $510,000 in block grant and 250,000 from the, uh, general fund. And FIC contributed approximately $300,000. So after they were, uh, awarded that block grant funding to convert the church into the homeless shelter, they entered into a performance agreement with the city, which they said they will operate that facility as a homeless shelter for 10 years. Um, the city agreed to forgive the block grant and general fund contribution over 120 months with the termination date of July 1, 2026. And both, both parties are current with that agreement, those terms. Um, staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager or his designate to execute a funding agreement with Friends in Crisis. I'm sorry, Families in Crisis for the Friends in Crisis homeless shelter in the amount of $350,000 from the fiscal year and general fund surplus fund balance. And we are here for questions.
Thank you, Ms. McNair, for that, uh, presentation. I don't see, uh, but Councilmember Adams.
I, do you, and I don't know if you can answer this or if, uh, one of the, the CEO, CO can. What, uh, I didn't see where, of the 350, that will carry them to how far?
September of 2025.
Okay, um, and then is there any funding done by Families in Crisis to support, to match, uh, like we've done, like they've done in the past?
You know, I believe, I won't speak for them if they have matched dollars. You can come up. If you have matched for the 350.
You asked if we had matched.
Like is there any, any other funding coming from your normal, from your other, that goes with this funding?
Not at this time. We have applications still out and still pending and we're hopeful to get some. But at this time, like for instance, TURF money, we didn't, it depends. TURF is emergency money for, um, we just had a disaster, so they could have spent it all then and we don't get any. We don't know the answers yet at this time.
Okay. Thanks, um, Ms.
Mr. Adams, you know, I think there's a different, I mean, a different answer to that. Because part of the match is what they've done from October 1 till now. I'm not saying that's a match and I think maybe you were talking going forward, but, but they've used the funds that they have been able to put together on their own to get us to, to this point.
Okay. And, and with that is, because we, we, we donated some, we, um, gave money, was it last year?
Yes, that was the ARPA money.
That was the ARPA funding.
$350,000.
So this would be the second one, so 700K in this. That's why. And so is this a continuation from that? Cause then that would address whether they covered in between. Is this, this is, is this picking up from where the previous 350 left off and we going forward?
I, I think you could look at it that way. I think it's a, a reflection of the world changing.
Yeah.
That those sources of funds are drying up and they're harder to come by, more competitive is, is the, that's the reason that they're here.
Yeah, and I, you know, with nonprofits, we tend to have to do some fundraising ourselves too. And I know that was one of the issues that came up when the previous 350 was discussed of what additional funding.
We do hold an annual fundraiser, um, it, last year we held it in April. It was the Friends of the Family Casino Night and that raised about $38,000. Uh, we use that for matching funds for all of our programs.
Okay, so that was, that's, I just want to make sure, so if everyone doesn't know that we're just paying you and you're not doing anything to keep your operation going as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Uh, Councilmember Cobb.
My question is quick. I understand you have your fundraisers, but if you keep coming back for money, something is not working. What's not working? Do you need accounting? Do you need some help? Are we not giving you enough? Something is not working. And, and maybe I'm not understanding it in the ri, in the right manner. But it seems like every time we get close to the end of that fiscal or the end of something, we're giving more money. What can we do to ensure that we're not constantly giving the same people money for basically? I know, I, I, I know. I know that we cannot put a number on how many people will need help. I know that. I get it. But at the same time, if we have other nonprofits that come and they're asking constantly for money and we, and we say no to them, but yet and still we have them because we're saying this is a crisis, this is a fu, people need this money. How do we get enough money that you don't have to keep coming back so that when we budget, it's done? So that the next man or woman who's looking out there with their nonprofit are saying, well, Ms. Cobb, y'all giving everybody else money, why you ain't give me none? Cause that's just what they'll say. I, I, just a quick question.
Ms. McNair.
Well, um, and if, if I may just answer, um, not all pro, nonprofits are providing services, um, to, uh, vulnerable communities. So I would, I would, um, maybe look at it from the perspective, what unique service is being provided by any nonprofit? And how does it impact overall the quality of life and availability of certain public and human services in the city to make that determination? Because it is, um, it seems to be, uh, more sensible to compare apples to apples. Um, you know, versus just a blanket nonprofit to another nonprofit, just to look at what their operations are and what the, um, reverberating impact would be if that one were to, um, cease operations.
And that's what we need to hear.
Mm-hmm.
That's important to know. When we're just hearing, okay, they, they ran out of money, we need to give them some more money, but why? What, what is the source behind it? Why is it different than one nonprofit and the other nonprofit not getting? And it's because of the human services and the things that we give.
Correct.
So thank you, thank you for, for answering that.
Um, and if I may additionally, on the slide that says other funding requested, which lays out their sources, every source on here is a federal source of funding. And we know that the, um, new administration has, they have been very adamant and very clear about their intent to cut expenses from the federal government. So when we look at where they are sourcing from, they're applying for these things directly on their own. And they are, uh, at the mercy of the, uh, source of this funds.
And that's why it's so important because we have other systems and other programs that are being cut and they're coming vast and various.
Thank you, Councilmember Cobb, your time is up.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Segala.
Thank you. The funding you're requesting, you said it takes you through September, right? Was it September?
Mm-hmm.
And what happens in September then?
What happens in September?
What happens after September?
In September, our ESG would start over. So we'll get that 200, I don't know the exact amount yet.
No.
Funding to start our next cycle. That's already in the pipeline, that has been reviewed, so it will get approved. It's just we don't know that number and it was, it starts actually, it actually starts one November. We gotta get to this.
I understand.
And then we go.
No, because this is, I, I remember the first time it was when they shut the shelter down and that's the first time. That's so last year wasn't the first time. And it's been mentioned, you know, all the budget cuts and the cuts that you are getting. And we all have hearts and we want to take care of people. The challenge I see is, you know, we understand and, and we're cautious of all these funding cuts. But then it seems like the burden is going to come on us, you know, as a state cut, it seems like we're increasing the amount that we provide. And so that's like a seesaw, you know, it's like an unbalance. I mean, we didn't, used to pay a lot, but lately it's just going up and up and up. And now who knows, it might go up and next year you might be in here for 500,000. And I think it's a time, it's like, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough question, but, uh, it's one of those things we have to ask, you know? And it's like, uh, because I know we, we, we were many years without a homeless shelter and that said, and we're in the process trying to do Transition Center. But, uh, it's, it's tough because I mean, we can't predict the future, but we all kind of sense as, as, um, as it's been mentioned, you know, it's drying, drying as the city managers, things are drying up. But, you know, that burden is coming back to the city and so we, we just got to be careful with this and, um, you know, I don't know yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Segala. Uh, Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, and thank you, Mrs. McNair, um, and both of y'all for being here today. You know, y'all came to us before, I think a lot of this stuff has already been said. I had some concerns back then. Not anything towards you guys, obviously the need is there, the need is great. But it is one of those things, like some of the other council members have mentioned, to where there is a rub for, at least on our end, um, to trying to respond, responsibly spend taxpayer dollars. And how do we allocate those funds and what makes the most sense? And obviously, like I said, the, the need that y'all serve is there, um, that comes at a cost. I, I looked at everything that was provided for us, I sat down with everything, uh, since your inception up to this point. I see that you guys have the note with Exco Banks, um, through 2031. That's about $2,100 a month at 4.25% interest. Your payroll's about 27%, which is, is not bad, it's typical. I think the typical range is between 15 and 40% for payroll. Um, your rehab agreement, we're, we're good there through about March 31st of this year. Um, your second performance agreement, as Ms. McNair stated, is set to expire July 1st of 2026. So I guess my question is, i- if this did not happen, if this 350 did not happen, uh, but we have a performance agreement in place through July of 2026, what happens then? And then also what happens to the actual shelter building if Friends in Crisis ceases to exist? Or if it doesn't, if it, let's say this funding goes through and they get the money and then the reunification center gets built. Um, and then y'all move over to the new reunification center off of Atkinson. Uh, again, what happens to this existing, um, building? You know, maybe there's some possibility, um, in there. Anyways, I'm just trying to think out loud to, to make sure that we're weighing all these options and making the most informed decision that we can make. I know that there are lots of other, uh, nonprofits out there who, who also serve a great need, like the Greater Clean, uh, Community Clinic. You know, I'm sure that they would love to have additional funding. You know, lots of other entities out there, Habitat for Humanity, whoever, um, that they are, they serve a great need and they could, they would all love to have money. So, uh, I think another council member mentioned that, you know.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez, your time is up.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protim. Good evening. Given these, the ever-growing need, uh, to address homelessness in the community, um, how likely is it that, uh, we will be in the same position as the City Council, uh, in September?
Um, there's, um, a chance that you could be in the same situation in September. But that is because after talking not only with the people at Families in Crisis, um, I like to just be transparent, speaking with, uh, the leadership and the KPD or Colleen Police Department's Community Engagement Unit separately, both have told me that they are seeing increases in the number of the homeless population from people drifting in from Austin and other areas. So if that continues to increase, the need is going to be there. Um, this facility will probably be providing more services to more people, more food, more utilities. Um, it could, it could be there. And then with the, no one knows what the reduction in federal funding is going to be. So it could be a couple of hundred thousand dollars that they see decrease, or it could just be the end of any federal program that's been funded for decades that were institutional and, uh, long-term programs. But, um, it's hard to, you know, speak on what the future is going to be, um, with any type of certainty. It's just looking at what we have before us now and pretty much preparing for what the likelihood of something like that could look like. And I think the administration, uh, federal administration, their intent is to cut some of these programs. So like, uh, Councilmember Alvarez said, that the, uh, responsibility is more on the state and the local governments versus federal.
It sounds to me that the primary concern is that in the future, a lot of the funding that's relied upon might try up. Is that correct?
Based on, uh, happenings over the last three weeks, I would say yes.
I see. Okay. I share a lot of what some of my councilmembers, uh, have expressed, which is concern about, uh, being expected almost to consistently provide such a high level of funding to, uh, supplement this ever-growing need and, uh, a necessary program, I will say. Um, and that's just speaking on behalf of, uh, constituents who have expressed concern. Uh, I do think it's important to highlight as well in the audit information and financial documents that we don't show a history of mismanagement of funds within the organization. So that has been, um, that has been made clear and that is transparent, uh, for the public to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a very valid point, Councilmember Boyd, thank you. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I wanted to give Ms. McNair a chance to answer those questions.
So what happens if the facility, and thank you. What happens if the facility closes is, uh, because you have this performance agreement and the other party is not, um, operating based on the terms of that agreement, the first thing that could happen is the city could foreclose for the remaining amount because they're not performing. Um, if you were to foreclose, you would have that CDBG money back in. And then now you have potentially a building that you need to find a, a reason for the city to use it. Um, I don't know, as long as that process may take, if it would be worth it, um, come July 1 of 2026. I don't have any, uh, ideas myself of what the church could be used as if the city foreclosed and took possession of it. Um, if they were to get the, the funding and transition over to the new building, uh, they have plans for that facility that they can speak on.
We plan to transfer the old building into housing for underserved populations. So it will still be one of the CDBG requirement things.
Approved, yeah.
Approved. So we would only owe a certain amount of money if the city tried to foreclose. And we'd have to pay that off. We wouldn't give you a bill, two million dollar building. But I'd also go to HUD and fight to keep the building because I'm just going to repurpose it for another CDBG eligible thing. That's how we would do it.
Yes, sir.
Because we want to use it for housing afterwards.
Sure, no, makes sense. Thank you for that.
We got so many people I'm paying rent for other buildings for my folks to be in. And this one's almo- almost paid for.
That makes sense. Thank you. Um, I guess my next question would be for, for Mr. Cagle. You know, and maybe this is another conversation for another day or another meeting. You know, maybe it's time that we look into, you know, what does it look like if the city was to run and staff the Reunification Center? What is the cost difference versus what we've been spending? And what we would spend or what the taxpayers would spend if it was housed, um, under the city? Is it better? Is it worse? I don't know. I think it's a, a valid question. Um, so at least when we, you know, go to make a decision, you're making a decision with the most amount of information as you can. Anyways, thank you.
Sure. I think it, it's going to be considerably more expensive if, if we're doing it. We could still apply for some of the, the grants, different things they were getting, but our costs are going to be higher if, if we're doing it. I, uh, I hate to say it, but I think going forward, this is, we just figure out how we're going to pay for this. Either we do it through dealing with a lot more problems in downtown and with more police downtown, or eventually, we're going to have to start budgeting in the general fund some, some assistance to run a shelter. I think that's the direction that we're headed. It, it's not a, it's not a, a good choice either way.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. Uh, Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, um, Mayor Protim. So, Mr. Cagle, um, to you again, uh, you're saying that it, it would be cheaper, um, if we were to get into, it would be cheaper for his, Families in Crisis than for the city to, to get involved?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And another question I have for Families in Crisis is that last, I believe about this time last year, in terms of the 350, you came up and said that we would be good after September of 2024. I think y'all were waiting on something then. Is that correct?
We said that the new grants would start off in November of '24, the ESG, just like before. Every year it starts in November. We gotta get there. We, that starts us going. And then we keep asking for money until we get to the end.
Okay. But you said, excuse me, you said that it would, uh, that would kind of hold you? That would, in September, you would be okay?
No. If I did, I did not mean to say that.
Okay. You know, because.
Two hundred thousand is not going to cover 600. That's all we get it in November. We gotta get the rest of it.
All right, thank you.
FEMA helps, CDBG helps, um, some of these other grants that we do.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon. Uh, Councilmember Cobb, this is your, um, second time? Go ahead, please.
Sir, ma'am. I wish we could take care of every homeless person and everyone that needed something. That would just be a grand gesture. But we're not going to be able to do all of that. And we're not going to be able to constantly have, to go, to, to give one figure and come back, change that figure, get that, because we're, we're shorting. We're, we're short. We see it. We see it's not feasible. We see what's going on. What I'm asking is maybe you can help us out and we work together here. And let's look towards that future without maybe 50% of the grant or 50% of that grant or money is going to come. And see, how many people can we take care of? Who can we? Let's give like a, a future, a future, uh, analyst of what could happen. If we don't get as much, or if you don't come back to the council, if we don't have any money. Our funds are drying up too. So we just got to make sure everyone is being taken care of, but in a collectively manner. You think that's a, that's a, that's possible? To make a future, um, analyst of what we're looking at? Looking at your daily ratio and cutting it in half of what you can take care of with less money? Then that way, if this occurs again, then you'll know, well, I can't take 20 families. I can take 10 families. I can't take 100 families or 100 children. I'll take 50 until the grants come, until we have that money. So you won't have to keep coming back. But you'll have an adequate amount. I know, I know. It leaves some families out, but we're going to have to do the best that we can with what we have. And that's where I'm going.
Thank you, Councilmember Cobb. Uh, Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protim. Two questions. The first question is, what is the history of the county's participation in supporting this initiative?
The TURF money comes through the county. Um, it was great during ARPA, we got it all. It's got cut in half, stopped for a minute or two. We don't know where we're at with them right now. But the county itself, they said their applications are closed. They won't take no new apps. We've asked two years in a row. So we can't get in that cycle yet. But the TURF money, depending on if they spent the money in the disaster we just had, or if they still got some, we should be entitled to some of that.
Thank you for that response. I was just curious, looking at the slide and seeing, uh, just the past four years. So thank you for that. The next question I have is actually for the police chief. I'm going to catch you while you're sipping your water. Sorry about that. So I think it's important to just give a overview of reality, should we no longer have, uh, this shelter in place relating to crime?
Welcome, Chief Lopez, thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you for that question, Councilmember Boyd. It's a very important question. And this situation, dealing with this vulnerable population, is not just specific to Colleen. This is a nationwide issue that we have. And when we, as a community, as a city, as a county, as a state, as a federal, fail to meet the basic human needs, a lot of this population has no other choice but to resort to crime to meet their basic needs, like getting food, showering, seeking help. So if we decide as a council to, to not fund this project, it is going to have some indirect costs added to the budget, whether it comes through the law enforcement, through Fire Department for Health, and other indirect costs that we can't really calculate right now. So there are some issues if, if we decide not to fund this, this center. We need to find a long-term solution for this. And all communities across the United States are, are, are dealing with this problem. And nobody has found a long-term solution yet. But if we support this initiative, at least it gives us a little more time to try to find a long-term solution. And I think Sergeant Moore could tell you, um, a little bit more, because he deals with this population, him and his team, every day, deal with this population on, on, on a personal basis. So he could add some context to this conversation.
Thank you.
Welcome, Sergeant Moore, thank you.
All right, so a couple of things. I've been in the back kind of like, like, jump, you know, jumpscats trying to jump in there. Um, unofficially, you guys don't know, uh, you guys may or may not know, I'm also the chairperson of the Central Texas Homeless Coalition, and we recently just did the point in time count in January. I know what the unofficial numbers are. I know everybody's been calling me saying, hey, what are the numbers? What are the numbers? Unofficially, the numbers are up. There's a lot of reasons for that. Uh, it was already mentioned earlier today, uh, Austin shutting down some of their shelters, and we have seen an influx of some of those individuals that are here. But bottom line is, and I'm not here to, um, I don't want to sway or whatever, but I just got to be, be real. January, uh, July 2019, we saw an infl- we had the shelter shut down for whatever reason. That being said, we saw what that looked like. We've made a lot of positive steps forward with the downtown area. If that were to, if we were to lose this asset, um, like Chief said, it would increase in other areas. Obviously, people have businesses and things that are downtown. We have the, the brewery getting ready to open up. We got a lot of great things that are happening downtown. We don't want to take steps backwards. All right? But as far as our partnership with, uh, Friends in Crisis, man, we would not be as, I say we, I'm speaking as far as not just the Homeless Outreach Team, but the Community Engagement Unit, not just Friends in Crisis, but all of our community partners. We would not be as effective as we are if we didn't have a great relationship, in which we do. So, again, um, um, uh, look, we already said it, funding is going away in other places. That being said, we have to step up. Maybe we can look at other cities, cities like San Antonio. Now, granted, we're not San Antonio. San Antonio is a big multi-area, but they have in their budget, already a budget line that they put towards the homelessness. All right, Haven for Hope, if you guys don't know. So it looks like that's the future. So leave it to you guys' hands. We also have our social worker, LSW, uh, here that can provide that same information as far as the partnership that we have to speak on that as well.
Good afternoon, uh, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Ron Patrick, I'm the LSW for the Homeless Outreach Team, Community Engagement Team. And like Chief said, uh, this is a very vulnerable population. You got to think about, if there's no shelter in place at night when the sun goes down, these people are going to be resorting to crime. They're going to be resorted to, uh, getting taken advantage of. And like I said, no one's going to go hungry. They're going to, you know, do what they need to do to feed themselves. It's going to increase, uh, costs for the, uh, Police Department, emergency services. And that's basically about it. A lot of the clients that I do do daily intakes on, I refer, let's say, on a monthly basis, I can receive anywhere between 45 to 70 individuals a month. Uh, about 15 to 20% I re- I refer to the shelter. And, uh, if they're not available, the only closest shelter we have is the one in Temple, the Salvation Army, and then sometimes Waco. And if they're not, if not a veteran, there's not too much for them to, to go on. So, um, that's all I can speak on right now.
Thank you for that, sir. Councilmember Boyd.
And, and thank you for that information. Uh, to the city manager, this is my last question. I see the funding comes from the mid-year budget amendment. Is that correct?
Not exactly. It comes from the year-end surplus from the, the 24 budget. The audit is almost complete. So we, we know we have this funding available. You'll, you'll have the audit, uh, presented next month.
Sure. Well, I appreciate the information. Uh, I think it's important when we make decisions, we hear, uh, a well-rounded approach to, uh, what we're facing. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Sagara.
Thank you. Just one real quick question. You mentioned the numbers are up, right? But I think Officer Kyle said something that's very interesting. And he said that in Austin, they shut some of the shelters down and they came over here.
Yes.
And I think that's the other side of it. I know that a lot of people feel that if we did not have a shelter, they would go somewhere else. Because the more, you know, we want to help our vulnerable population, but the more you provide, and they probably came over here because they shut it down over there and they're looking for a shelter. And, uh, so, so I'm not sure. I don't know if, if, if us doing what we're doing has, is, is what causes this increase? Do you guys know? Is, you know, the things that you provide, the great service, the, everything is, is that what growing it? And saying, people come over here to Colleen because they got a great shelter? So.
The increase that we get from Austin and other areas, but especially Austin, is normally very short-lived. And they go back to Austin. We have no medical, we have no dental, we have no housing for them. They don't stay here very long. And they go back to where they have all that stuff. All we have is shelter. And we tell them to get 30 days to find a, a job.
I know that, um, when we did, um, that survey one time is, you know, where are we getting our homeless and stuff like that? I don't know if it's still relevant now, if it's the same situation. What was it that, um, I forgot his name, that he, he gave us, uh, as far as where? What was his name? Marbit, there you go, Marbit. Thank you. And, uh, he said that a lot of them were coming from the Bay. So you, do you guys still see that? You know, not necessarily, you know, people that leave the military and, and, and can't find your work or things like that. Is that, or are they coming from other places?
We, we do see that. I don't, I, I would think a lot of our people are local from, from the conversations we have with them. We have a lot of staff who have been in this area their entire lives. And they're encountering clients that they went to school with. So I, I think overall, it is basically a local. So I think overall, it is basically a local community. Of course, with the exception of a lot of those folks coming off of military service.
Yeah. And it's a challenge, because I know you guys do great work, and I know officers do great works, and we definitely have a heart for our vulnerable population. But it seems that the more, you know, we do provide, it's going to grow. And then we're going to be stuck having to pay for that if everybody on the state level and all that are going the other way. And if Austin, who had a huge number of homeless, are shutting down their population, and they're going somewhere else, maybe that's their strategy. I'm not sure. You know, so it's a tough situation to be in. Thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you, Councilmember Segarra. Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Protem. I just want to say that I know that there is a great need, not just for Families in Crisis. I mean, we are experiencing this. I am in, and I've worked with you, and I've worked with all of the shelter. We have the director of Cobhouse here, Mr. Brian Hawkins. And we experience a lot. I mean, it's all, it's in Central Texas. I mean, and it's not only coming from people just hearing about the shelter. It's coming from family members of military and people that are living here. They come from all kinds of places, and then they get in arguments, and boom, the family put them out for whatever reason. And then you have mental health reasons. And so I do understand, I understand it's a great need, and I applaud the work that y'all are doing over there. I really do. I mean, y'all do great work. I am not against that work, because we need it. It's a need. And people don't think it's a need sometimes because they don't see it. It's, you know, out of sight, out of mind. And people don't, you know, say, hey, hey. But it's a great need, and you see it downtown. And we, hey, we've got to, we've got to help those that are less fortunate. We just got to do it. I mean, and because you see them all over, you see one of the bridges. And I know KPD do a good job with the bridges and all, and getting the homeless into a place. And I want to say, our outreach, the city outreach, homeless outreach, do a fantastic job. I mean, I mean, they're out there every day. So I want to say that, I just want to put emphasis on, there is a need. And now, I do understand, I just want to hash it out, because I just didn't know which way to go with this, because we didn't want people just coming. You know, we've got other nonprofits in the area. But I understand what you just said, Ms. Tiffany, in terms of recognizing what do certain nonprofits do, and how they really benefit. And they have been here a long time, and they have served this community well with our homeless population. And so I want to thank you for what you do, and I do understand the need. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. My questions weren't to steer in a direction of not doing it, but I know we've had a plan, and we kind of got sidetracked. And this is kind of a sidetrack a bit. What is the estimated time for the, to get back before we can present, begin work on the, and I'm leading too back to this issue, but on the new emergency shelter and the transition center?
Well, we have, myself, Mrs. Smith, our engineering staff, have a meeting with the architect and engineering group on March 4th. They're still working on the plans. They've made significant progress, and we'll be looking at 60% of, 65% of the drawings on March 4th.
Okay. My issue is making sure, because as we go forward, I anticipate us having the need to fill a gap again until that facility is open. And so I'm hoping that as we go into the next cycle, that we consider all that. The unfortunate thing, I mean, across the country, we just talked about this at the last NLC conference, every city is dealing with this, and every city that's, if you can call it success, because being without a roof over your head is not success, but cities that are addressing it have created public-private nonprofit partnerships. And I think that's the direction that we talked about going. I think we should still go in there. And then the reason for it to be unhoused is so wide. You don't have one single approach. And there are decisions that we make on this dais that affect, whether it be property taxes or whatever, that cause people to can't afford it and become. So it could be any thing. And we just got to make sure that we're able to support it until we, it's like an investment that eased out, that an investment that started in 2013, but unfortunately is continuing to come from public funds. And that's why I ask questions. What are the other funds? And maybe we need to help advertise the next fundraiser to make sure this is done, because it's with a city that decides is growing, and all the other requirements that we have with roads, water infrastructure, you name it, we're going to, everybody could be, end up being homeless if we're not careful. So I do support when we get to it, but I think we need to still, if we need to adjust the plan, accelerate parts of the plan, or relook the plan, let's do that so that this isn't a constant. If we got to put that in our budgets to adjust it, we need to have a realistic number based on what we can and cannot do. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. And lastly, I just want to just kind of recap, because there was a lot that was said here. It's very valuable information that you all mentioned and brought forward. But yes, to your points, that the cities are overwhelmingly becoming responsible for the care of its citizens, and the municipalities are having to find creative ways to address this issue. One of the things that I've said since day one for myself here was call to action and community partnerships. Councilmember Adams has reiterated that point, and I will say it again and again and again. If our community partners are listening, this is the time that we need them now to step in and help offset, because it is only going to projected get worse, right? So that puts us in a position where we have to start thinking ahead of the curve, to the point that was made earlier. How do we offset this? Where's the funding mechanism? What does that look like? And especially with the federal funding, this has been a big concern, because we also are watching this carefully and understanding that because of the diversity, equity, and inclusion that this program specifically stands for and targets, you are at risk greatly. So what does that mean if the funding completely goes away? How do we make sure that our citizens, our most vulnerable, are still being taken care of? So this is a definitely call to action. We've made this call before, but if there are community partners that are looking and watching and receiving this message, I do hope that they reach out to you for future reference or future assistance and partnerships so that we can form a plan to make sure that you can maintain, to take care of our most vulnerable moving forward. This is truly, we've heard all of the reasonings, whether it was from the public safety, the medical side of it, the stressors that it would put on other aspects. And so we have to take all of those things into consideration. Again, you guys have a tremendous job to do. Thank you, Councilmember Boyd, for pointing out that there was no nefarious or bad behavior on the side of budgeting and things like that. But this is just the world that we're living in right now, and the citizens, the city of Colleen as a whole, we need to come together to be able to figure out an alternative, because unless we have a funding mechanism that's in our back pocket, which I don't necessarily see at this moment, because we're at risk in a lot of different ways, it is going to take our village to be able to take care of our neighbors. Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions at this time. I appreciate you all. Thank you for coming forward. Madam Secretary.
RS 25017. Consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the termination of the Employee Benefits Trust Fund, effective February 4th, 2025.
Good afternoon.
Welcome, Ms. McDaniel. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a little bit of history on the trust before we get into a staff recommendation. Chapter 222 of the Texas Insurance Code is what provides for taxes with regards to insurance premiums, specifically as it relates to municipalities and their exemptions if they establish a trust like we have put in place. Our trust went into place in July of 2010, and we've been operating under that trust since that time. As you might remember, in 2021, the city became a self-funded entity with regards to its medical and prescription insurance provisions. And at that time, we no longer sent those claims and those payments for premium through the trust fund, because we became a self-funded entity. Dental, however, has remained inside of that trust, and we've continued to funnel those payments through that trust. However, to date, our provider, MetLife, offers us an exempt rate with regards to premium, and therefore, the trust is actually not saving staff any money or the city any money. It's actually costing us money because of the staff hours it takes to maintain the trust and double down on the payment routing. So, that being said, staff is recommending that we terminate the Employee Benefit Trust, as there are no savings currently associated with having one in place. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. McDaniel. Seeing none at this time? We appreciate you. Madam Secretary.
RS 25018. Consider a memorandum resolution approving a petition for release from the City of Colleen Extraterritorial Jurisdiction submitted by Monty and Susan Crawford for approximately 19.961 acres out of the W. Allen Survey, abstract number 24. The subject property is generally located on the south side of FM 2484, west of the intersection of Brewer Road.
Thank you, Ms. Messer.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor Protem and Council. I apologize for my voice. As you know, during the 2023 legislative session, the legislature passed Senate Bill 2038, which amended Chapter 42 of the Local Government Code to allow property owners to petition the municipality for release from that city's ETJ, or extraterritorial jurisdiction. That amendment became effective on September 1st, 2023. In this case, the subject property is roughly 19.9 acres located on the south side of FM 2484. We received a petition for release from the ETJ on December 12th of 2024 from Monty and Susan Crawford, who are the owners of the subject property. The applicant intends to subdivide the property for purposes of allowing relatives to develop single-family homes on these lots. So the red star indicates the location of this property. This is an aerial view of the subject property, so you can see that it's right on the edge of our ETJ. So with the adoption of Senate Bill 2038, the Local Government Code essentially states that the municipality must release the property from its ETJ, or it's considered done by a matter of law. So with that, Chapter 42 also states that the ETJ may only be reduced if the governing body gives its written consent by ordinance or resolution. So staff is recommending that the council approve the petition requesting release from the ETJ. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Messer, for that presentation. We have no questions at this time. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 25019. Consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the issuance of certificates of obligation for capital projects and further directing the publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation for capital projects.
Welcome, Ms. Tanglin. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. The notice I intend to issue certificates of obligation, this is the item I'm presenting today. The projects outlined in this presentation were identified in fiscal year '23 and '24. And as we developed the '25 budget, we recognize the need to bring these projects to the council for consideration this fiscal year. The estimated increase to fiscal year '26 debt service INS tax rate is 2.16 cents for $100 valuation. And we use the following assumptions: 2% growth in freeze-adjusted taxable value, less turs, an estimated 4.5% of bond interest rate in a 20-year bond. The certificates of obligation are tax-placed. It will be source of payment for debt services. The resolution or intention authorized proceeding with the issuance of the CO identifies allowable uses of the proceeds in specific capital projects, sets maximum principal amount of $29 million, directs the publication of public notice, and authorized payment of attorney general examination fee. This is the project list for the CO. We have Featherline, Mohawk, Chaparral, Golf Course, Fire Station, Fire Rebuild. I just want to mention that the Golf Course is a tax-supported with revenue pledge. And this means that the city has the ability to use tax revenues to pay off the debt. However, we intend to use golf revenues to cover the payments. The tax backing provides additional security, which can help us get better financing terms. The remaining step will be in February 9, public notice published. And we also will have it published in the website for more than 45 days. In February 18, the application for a rating of the CO. On March 20, we'll have an official statement distributed to the bidders. In April 1st, the bid will be received on the CO, and city council will consider an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the CO. In April 22, will be the closing, and the funds will be delivered. The recommendation is the city council approved proceedings with issuance of certificates of obligation for capital projects and further directing the publication or notice or intention to issue certificates of obligation for capital projects. Our final advisor, Dan Weg Miller, from Special Public Finance, is here in person. And our bond counsel, Barb Fowler, he has joined us, be as soon to assist in answering any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Tanglin. Looks like we have a few questions. We're going to start with Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. First question I ask is, I don't see the veterans park on here anymore. Is there, why did that fall off the priority?
I can probably answer that. It, that's going to depend. It's incorporated into the City Hall project. If that passes, then it's there. If it's not, it's something we would have to take on in the future.
Okay. And then on the golf course, I'm not really a fan of using tax dollars to cover that. But will the ordinance reflect, your draft ordinance, will it reflect the revenue coming? So it's not, so the property taxes aren't paying for it?
Yes, the ordinance will pledge the revenues for it. The property taxes is just a backup. If they cannot pay, we have to pay for it.
Okay.
This is similar to the way we issue utility fund debt. It's taxed back, but you pay it with the revenue generated from utility fund, because you get a better borrowing rate that way. And if you remember, a couple of years ago, we set up the Golf Course Fund as its own enterprise fund. So the sources of revenues are the golf fees, the daily fees, the membership fees, anything that the golf course generates, whether it's food and beverage, the pro shop, any of that. That all stays in there. And if you'll remember, it was not that many years ago, they were losing maybe $300,000 to $500,000 a year. And now we're earning enough to go in and make some major capital improvements that are way over needed. The irrigation system's almost 50 years old, and that's the major expense there is replacing that. And it is the golfers that will pay to replace it.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Ms. Tanglin, for the presentation. I wanted to clarify a few of these items, mostly for the public. And maybe this is, Mr. Cagle, you can probably speak to these better. I think Featherline, we're all familiar with that one. Mohawk Drive, we've talked about that for quite some time. And I believe the portion to the west is being constructed by a developer. So this is the portion to the east of Bunny Trail that'll connect to Castle Gap, I believe. And then Chaparral, is this for Phase 1A?
This is just to do the final engineering for the whole project.
Final engineering.
Yeah, this is the additional money that we need. We believe the county has agreed, they were putting $3 million into the project. They've agreed to let it go to the engineering as well. So with, if this is approved tonight, we will have enough to completely engineer the road from 195 to Harker Heights.
Okay. But for Featherline and Mohawk, that's design and construction?
It is. And if you'll recall, we already awarded the design on Featherline.
Yes, sir. Okay. I just wanted to make sure, reiterate that, so everybody knew what it was for.
Ms. Tanglin, do you want to put, go back to that slide with the projects? Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. And that appears to be all the questions we have, Ms. Tanglin, at this time. Thank you very much. Madam Secretary.
Thank you. RS 25020. Consider a memorandum resolution approving joint election contracts with Colleen Independent School District and Central Texas College. And this is my item. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and Council.
Thank you, Ms. Calcoat.
Thank you. The City of Colleen has previously held joint elections with Colleen Independent School District and Central Texas College. This year, the city will be holding general and special elections in May. CTC will be holding an election to elect three officers to their Board of Trustees, and KISD will be electing three members to their school board. Both KISD and CTC Both KISD and CTC have requested to contract with the city once more for election-related services, which the Texas Election Code authorizes. Additionally, school districts are required to hold joint elections per the Texas Education Code. The Contracts for Election Services Before You Today separates early voting and Election Day due to the various duties and services of contracting officers associated with early voting and Election Day. The three early voting polling locations and eight Election Day polling locations are also noted and separated out in the contracts. And this just gives a kind of a general overview of the contracts. The benefits, the city, KISD, and CTC have determined that it is in the public interest to enter into a joint contract for the May third, 2025 election due to the benefits of voter convenience and reduction in election costs for each entity. As the contracts outline, upfront election expenses will be paid by the city. KISD and CTC will be invoiced by the city for these expenses, and there will be a cost sharing of one-third of the expenses. However, if one or both of the entities has an uncontested election or no proposition is presented for a vote, then the entity is able to terminate the contracts but still pay for any fees accrued and expenses incurred prior to the receipt of written notice of termination by the party. The estimated total election cost is seventy-three thousand dollars, which would be potentially divided three ways between us. And the recommendation is for City Council to approve a resolution to hold joint elections with KISD and CTC and to authorize the city manager or his designate to enter into election service contracts for early voting and Election Day. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Calcutt. I do not see any questions at this time, madam.
I'm up next, too. OR 25002, consider an ordinance ordering the May third, 2025, general election for the purpose of electing a council member for each of the four districts. The May third, 2025, general election will be held to elect a council member from each of the city's four district seats. The current council members are Jessica Gonzalez in District One, Joseph Solomon in District Two, Nina Cobb in District Three, and Michael Boyd in District Four. The election candidate filing period is currently ongoing. It began on Wednesday, January fifteenth. The deadline to file to be... for a place on the ballot is Friday, February fourteenth, 2025, by five o'clock PM. To note, Monday, April twenty-first, is a state holiday, and no early voting will occur on that day. Therefore, the first day of early voting will be on Tuesday, April twenty-second, and run through Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, with no Saturday or Sunday voting occurring. Election Day will be held on Saturday, May third, 2025. Before you are the list of the three early voting polling locations, which are the same as in years past. Here's a list of four of the eight of the Election Day polling locations, which are the same as last year. And here are the rest of the polling locations for Election Day. The only difference from last year's Election Day locations is Sugarloaf Elementary was switched to Palo Alto Middle School for precincts four oh four, four twelve, and four fifteen. Here is a location map that has the early voting and Election Day polling locations shown, which is also available on the city's website. Here is the equipment that the city utilizes from Election Systems and Services, or ESNS. As you may have heard, the ESNS electronic poll book software was recently decertified by the State of Texas. ESNS has assured city staff that the new poll book software will be ready in time for the May third election. However, if it is not, the city's backup plan is to use paper rosters for a paper check-in process for voters. The election workers will then select the appropriate ballot style for the voter on the express vote machine using thermal ballots. Then, the DS two hundred machine will be used to tabulate and record the vote from the thermal ballot. Staff recommends the city council approve the ordinance ordering a May third, 2025, general election, and I am happy to answer any questions once more.
Thank you, Ms. Calcutt. Looks like we do have a question from Councilmember Adams.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. With the potential for... because sometimes it may cause some longer periods. You anticipate adding staff, and that's something you probably come back to us later for that. But to deal with the backlog?
Yes, sir. That's something that we have started discussing. We plan to hire two additional workers per location, like over-hires during our hiring process. So, we would potentially need an extra pair of hands at heavily-visited polling sites. I'm not sure each one of them would need another person there, but right now, we're looking at having four workers per site.
And that leads into my second question. Is three polling stations early voting enough? Did you see in the previous election, were there any of the three that were used, were they overcrowded, that could potentially need a fourth location?
So, the most heavily-visited early voting location is Lyons Park. That is, I mean, they probably have two or three times the number of voters, at least that we get here at City Hall, but I think three is meeting the need at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Thank you, Ms. Calcutt. That is the last question for now.
Thank you. Next, we have OR 25003, consider an ordinance ordering the May third, 2025, special election for the purpose of determining whether District Four Councilmember Michael Boyd will be recalled. Before you... I'll wait till Francisco gets it. Before you is an ordinance ordering a special election for Proposition A, which is the recall election for District Four Councilmember Michael Boyd. The City Charter, Sections one eleven through one eighteen, outlines the recall procedure for the mayor and city council. The recall timeline is also before you. The recall affidavit was filed in late June, 2024. The recall petition was returned on August twenty-eighth, 2024, with a total of three hundred forty-one signatures, two hundred eighteen of which were qualified, and one hundred twenty-three were unqualified. The recall petition was certified by City Council on September seventeenth, 2024, with the next uniform election date being Saturday, May third, 2025. To note, Proposition A will only be placed on the District Four ballot for voters to And the recommendation is City Council approve an ordinance ordering a May third, 2025, special And I'm happy to answer any questions once more.
Thank you, madam. It does not look like we have any questions at this time.
OR 25004, consider an ordinance ordering the May third, 2025, special election for the purpose of holding a bond election.
Welcome back, Ms. Tanglin.
Thank you. I'm going to read through a series of motion directions to explain how we got here today. For us, on September twenty, 2022, the City Council provided a motion of direction to prepare a financial forecast and assess future debt service capacity. On November fifteen, City Council provided motion of direction to seek citizens' input at a special city council workshop on January nine, 2023. That day, a special city council workshop was held to gather citizens' input on future capital projects and a potential bond issue. The City Council then provided a motion of direction to seek citizens' input through the city's website. On March thirtieth, 2023, a special city council workshop was held to review citizens' input from the city's website and discuss future capital projects and bond issues. Motion of direction to establish a bond committee was given that day. On April eighteenth, 2023, the city hired an architect to conduct a needs assessment and develop a conceptual layout for a new Colleen City Hall and municipal court complex. On May second, 2023, City Council discussed the appointment of members to the bond committee. On July eighteenth, 2023, the City Council provided motion of direction to delay the bond election from November twenty-three and reschedule it for the fall of twenty-four. In April sixteen, 2024, BSW Architects presented an interim report to City Council. Then again, on August sixth, they came back, and they provided a city hall status update with preliminary designs and cost estimates. On that day, we got a motion of direction for all City Council members to meet on August twentieth, 2024, to review all proposed designs and select one to present for the May 2025 election. The motion of direction... Also that day, we have a motion of direction to reschedule the bond election from November 2024 to May 2025. On August twenty, 2024, the City Council provided motion of direction to place the city hall project on May 2025 bond election ballot, and we received the same motion of direction on September seventeen, 2024. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance calling for a special election on May third, 2025, for the issuance of general obligation bonds to construct a city hall in alignment with the directions provided by the City Council through its motions. I will be happy to answer any questions, and just a reminder, Dan Webb Miller is here, and Barb Fowler is on soon if we have any questions.
Ms. Tanglin, looks like we do have a few questions. Councilmember Adams?
My first question, really for Mr. Kegel. The design that came back, is that the normal process to have that basic vignette before going to a ballot? Are there any more details that's required?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. I want to remind everybody that that was not a construction drawings, not ready to bid out. The price we paid for that was for the space planning to determine... They spent many hours and weeks working with all our department heads that would be in the new proposed city hall to determine the spaces they need now and in the future, and that's what we paid for. In addition, we also got a rendering of what it could look like, and if everybody's happy with that, if you're happy with that architect, if this bond were to pass, you could use that firm to move forward. At that time, the best approach to that, when you do engage an architect, is to engage a construction manager at the same time, so they can work together. But you don't, at this point in time or previously, you don't go for total construction drawings, because that's ten, fifteen million dollars. You don't make that kind of investment, not knowing the outcome of an election. So, if this is approved on the ballot, and it is approved on the ballot as well, it would probably take eighteen months to two years to get to a point where you're ready to bid out construction, and then it's two, a good two years of construction as well.
You actually answered my other two questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Segarra?
Thank you. My question probably goes to the city manager, but I had made mention this before. I think it's important that us as a city, you know, we have to kind of educate the citizens as to why this is important. If we don't have that education process out there, then the likely chances that we'll succeed are very slim. And so, what is the plan? If this does pass tonight, you know, I'd like to know, what is the plan to educate the public out there as to why we need a city hall?
Absolutely, and we're working with a marketing firm right now that will start to work full-time if you do approve this tonight. You've got to remember what the staff and council can't do from the dice. You can't advocate. All we can do is give factual information. So, we would put out a lot of information to the public about the square footage, the cost, the need, but at no time do you advocate or say vote for or against one way or the We're there as a resource. I'm sure the council would probably want to set, over the next few months, some meetings for questions and answers. We'll put out as much information as possible. And then, members of the community have to come together, those that support this, to do what staff and council can't do from the dice, is to go advocate, and that's usually where a political action committee comes into play.
And I understand we can't advocate from the dice, but as council members out there in the community, are we allowed to advocate for it?
Yes, you can. You can do that on your own time. It's not something that staff can do.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Kegel, just to piggyback off of that, when it's time for them to explain the pros and cons and everything to the community, will they also encompass the conversations that we had about what happens to our old buildings potentially? I mean, like, will that be part of that conversation as well?
Absolutely.
Because we went into great detail at some point about this, so...
We have, and all the dates that Ms. Tanglin... we'll use all that same information. This is the main building that there's not a real use for either. Either we're going to... if we're to move finance out of the Arts and Activities Center, we're going to repurpose that for the expansion of the police department in the north, municipal court downtown. We believe... We've had buyers in the past for that building for a commercial application. We believe that's the, by far, the easiest one to sell. And then, the other buildings that are going to be vacated are actually ones that are on the site currently that would be demolished.
Thank you. I just think it's important that they get a full picture so they can make an informed decision.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, sir. It looks like we have a couple of additional questions, ma'am. So, Councilmember Solomon?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Kegel, you said that you would hire an advertisement firm. If we approve it tonight, how soon will that launch in informing the public?
Immediately, and they will also prepare talking points for you, things that you can do, and we're going to put together all this information that Mayor Protem talked about, and we'll put that together for you, and that's also can be handouts to the community as well.
Because we wouldn't have a whole lot of time between now and May.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Alvarez?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And Mr. Kegel, I know we've discussed this in the past, and I just wanted to follow up with you to make sure you still believe this is the same. I think when last we talked, the potential impact to the tax rate, based on our last conversation, was about six cents. Somebody else said it could go up to ten cents. What do you think if it was a hundred and fifty-five million dollars? What do you think the potential impact to the tax rate could be?
Sure. And you would never... If this were approved and then approved by the voters, you would never issue all the hundred and fifty-five million at first, because there's a couple of years of design work and things that have to go on first. So, you'd have one small issue and then a larger issue after that. So, we've estimated the first debt issue would be about two cents, about two, two and a half cents on the first issue, but the second debt issue is a fair amount more, because this project, as you know, is a lot more than when we first started. So, then I think we're talking about another eight cents. Yes. That would be in about twenty thirty. So, if you're going to do the math, on an average home of about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, it's about twenty dollars a month, all totaled, once you add the whole thing together.
Right, about twenty dollars. That's about what I had, obviously, and that's also not including homestead tax exemption. Any exemptions that the property have would be further removed from that dollar amount. So, I think that's important for the taxpayers and the voters to know, because I've heard people throw out, it's going to be a hundred dollars a month, it's going to be eighty dollars a month on a tax rate. You know, so this potential impact, let's say it's, like you said, twenty dollars a month, but that is not at year one, that is at year five or six, whenever we end up drawing down the entire hundred and fifty-five million dollars. And another possibility I wanted to throw out there, and you can probably speak to it, is, you know, every year, we look at the tax rate anyways to set the tax rate. So, there is a possibility somewhere between year one and year six that the tax rate could be adjusted downwards, and if that's the case, then that will compensate some on that ten cents, would it not?
Yes.
If I may, I have a statement that I wrote for you guys. The cost to taxpayer for a two twenty-five thousand home will be four dollars and thirty-two cents in the first year when we issue debt for the design. If we issue the rest of the project, the cost will increase by fifteen dollars and ninety-four cents in the second issuance, bringing the total to twenty dollars. Bringing the total to 20 dollars and 26 cents, this amount will decrease each year by an average of 50 cents. So as you can see, because of the, we are estimating a 2.5% of growth in asset value on the homes. So you will see that decrease every year after the big impact.
And if you don't mind, I would like to add to that, because what we're talking about here is 20-year debt. I know there was a lot of information thrown out in the newspaper, that while it was maybe not incorrect, it wasn't accurate. When we put the bond documents out there, you always allow for the worst-case possibilities for, to allow the chance to issue 30-year debt if you wanted to, but we never do that. And so the number that's been floating around of 300 million or something is way off. I have no problem if someone wants to talk about, what's the total cost of this on principal and interest over 20 years? Fair question. But also just asking, when you look at your house's payoff, do you look at that? No. What do you owe in your house? You owe the principal. That's the way it's measured across all cities everywhere, but if our media wants to treat us different, that's fine, just so long as they let everybody know exactly what they're doing. And don't mix one comparison of our total debt of principal only, and then layer this on top of it with principal and interest. It gets very confusing when they do that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No, I agree. It's the same way you look at your amortization schedule for your home. It's a pretty sad document, so don't recommend you look at it, but if you did, you would see the total amount is not what it says that you owe for principal. Thank you for that, Mr. Cagle. Thank you, Ms. Tanglin.
Excellent questions. Councilmember Cobb.
Mr. Cagle, you mentioned that we would hire a marketing firm? Form? What, a form? Help me say it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. My question is, we have an excellent marketing team. What is that firm going to bring that we don't already have? I'm trying to save some money here.
Sure, they do this all the time. Yes, ma'am. And they're standing by, ready to go, and have already done some preliminary work, so, and they'll work hand-in-hand with our folks. It'll be a team.
Okay, so it won't be an extreme amount of money to have them?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. It's not even an amount that would come to council.
We can talk about, okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Great question. Councilmember Cobb. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro temp. Thank you, Ms. Tanglin, for running those numbers for citizens in the council to have that information. First thing, second thing, Mr. Cagle, I'll say it, there was misinformation that was printed in the local newspaper. There's always a way to sway voters for things that perhaps are not what are in alignment with what they think the city should have or be doing, the direction they should be going. To get off of that, I want to remind the voters that this is an absolute need for our community. This building is 100-plus years old, and we are paying excessive amounts for maintenance, and will continue to do the same thing in the future if we sustain this building. There's a need to consolidate a lot of our staff offices. We've gone over that several times in previous meetings, to give citizens a local one-stop-shop to take care of city business. Number three, in 2029, if this bond passes, that's when this building would be fully constructed. That's four years from now. The city is only growing. The last point I'm going to make is that not addressing City Hall is like not addressing Stagecoach. How long are we going to wait to get to that point? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. So no further questions at this time. Thank you, Ms. Tanglin. Madam Secretary.
Madam Mayor Pro temp, we are at the citizen comments on agenda items portion of the agenda.
Yes, ma'am. We are going to take a five-minute break, okay? Thank you. We're going to move into our section of citizens' comments. Keep in mind, on this agenda item, we have four minutes with one minute time allotted for City Council to respond with a statement or explanation without engaging in dialogue. Okay, so for our citizens' comments section, we have first up, Michael Fornino.
155 million dollars for what? You don't have a clear defined benefit for us, the public, that you want to pay for this. It's not going to usher in a renaissance downtown or anywhere else in this town. Putting this anywhere near a ballot is just plain stupid. The only firm plan is to put your names on a plaque claiming credit for its construction, and then build a city hall around it. That's just vanity. You torched city halls in other cities, but you failed to notice that they all have what we do not have: employment that pays above 25,000 a year, industry, large companies, reasons to want to live or even visit this town. Proof, you don't have the slightest idea about what our town is and what it needs. We have two airports, a railroad line which made this town possible to begin with, an interstate running right through the middle, and for well over a generation now, they've been ignored as the very things that would and do make any city successful economically. We built retail, not economic progress. A new city hall will not change that. For over a generation, this and previous council members have only sought to build houses. No foresight to attracting large employers who pay livable wages. The cash changes, but the script doesn't. People cannot and will not spend what they cannot and do not earn. A city hall at this cost is an insult to overtaxed and underserved citizens. This fantasy that if you build it, downtown will flourish, and people will come from all over the world and spend money downtown to raise up the city, nonsense. We're the promised millions of visitors from all over the world for that museum. I'm not seeing it. Nobody will come here to visit because we have a nice city hall. Sounds like the promise of the county annex. That's a pipe dream. How many times downtown been revitalized now? Nobody, with any honesty, sees these results that you're claiming. Have you been downtown during business hours? Have you walked the streets at night? I know you haven't. What about on weekends? It's deserted. I know a certain bar downtown that opened and closed pretty quickly because of no patrons of traffic, especially after dark. New city hall won't fix that. Another example, we've thrown over 200,000 in tax money and grants at a particular photography studio downtown. Certainly hasn't benefited anyone but the owner. If the business was thriving on its own, it wouldn't need grants to prop it up to appear successful. A new city hall won't fix that either. Other options available, but strangely, this is the only one you'll entertain because the city manager wants it. His financial expertise in Duncanville led to a forensic audit, which was recommended to be submitted to the Department of Justice, proving he has no expertise, but one can infer it to be criminal. Leander had the wisdom to fire him. Quarter million dollars misplaced on a budget caught by the citizens was just a mistake. Endless boil water notices. His solution to speeding and accidents on Rosewood, the intersection, only produced more speeding and more spectacular accidents. Contractor fees uncollected, and that's another mistake. What exactly are you an expert on? Taxes on businesses downtown, especially the ones that got grants, go uncollected, but you want to blame disabled veterans for a lack of revenue. Tax breaks that I and others have earned are attacked, but taxes that are justly owed, you leave them just to fly. Anybody really trust you with this? For the leadership that supports this and the content of their character, a convicted felon and thief, an expert on human behavior, who's been buried three times and embellishes a military record. Another steered ARPA funds into his own pockets and led to the comedy club disaster at taxpayer cost. Another steers road projects, and who knows what else yet to enhance his client's portfolio, very directly benefits by what this council votes on to approve, and is subject to recall for it. Yet another funneled grants to her church. You represent wisdom and foresight.
Thank you, Mr. Fornino. Your time is up.
Can I have one more minute?
We can inquire with the council. Grant a minute? Three noes. Grant a moment? Minute? No, sir, I'm sorry, the request is denied.
Would you please caution the gentleman behind me to shut his mouth while we're debating this back and forth?
The request is denied. And as a reminder, let's please keep our voices down, no talking while our meeting is in process. Thank you, Mr. Fornino. Up next, we have Dr. Cameron Cochran.
Before I start, can I ask where the mayor is?
No, no.
No, sir, that's personal.
Oh, personal, you don't need to. I love this man. Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro temp. Welcome to Groundhog Week. Yes, once again, those who live in Colleen will try and convince the City Council to stop making poor decisions, but again, they will be ignored just like Groundhog the movie. OR 25003, it's a special election for District Four, Michael Boyd's recall. People may not know, but back in September last year, I sent an email asking for the ordinance, the same ordinance to be changed, Article 10. I emailed the mayor, the city manager, the other city council members, and I requested that the ordinance be changed based on its too vagueness. In my email, I said, I'm suggesting Section 116 change to read so far, "A person approved under the recall process shall not be allowed to run or hold a public office for two terms back-to-back. That person must sit out for a cool-off period." We should not be rewarding recipients of the recall petition by allowing them to continue hold office and hold office and hold office. I guess back in September, people may not have seen this email in the front office or the city council, so I again forwarded it in December 2024. Once again, zero applies from the mayor, the city council, or anyone in the city hall. I guess if I'm not a major campaign donor, no one listens to me, but let's move on. RS 25019, issue certificates of obligation for capital projects. Mohawk Drive, almost 9 million dollars for a property developer. Yes, you heard it tonight, folks, they're going to use that money to develop a street, not that needs to be fixed, but to create a new street so more houses can be built. Looks like that street's in District Four, you know, the recalled Dr. or, you know, Boyd's area. Why not give another 9 million to help out someone who's been recalled? I'd rather use that 9 million to fix the water pipes in Colleen. Now let's look at the next thing that's on that list. The golf course, 3 million dollars. Oh, the golf course will pay for that? That golf course is barely worth 200,000. I don't know how 125 members are going to pay off 3 million dollars. They're going to go back to the city. Oh, by the way, I searched the Colleen comp plan for 2040, doesn't say anything about making repairs to the golf course. Guess you'll have to find that money somewhere else. What happened to that money I requested last month for force protection and the security measures for people attending downtown events? Guess we haven't heard any more about that, it's gone. Let's look at other things. How about the city hall? Let's look at that from a perspective of ethically, transparency, and legally. First question I have for you is, the city manager created, as it was shown in the slides, an advisory bond committee that last met in June 24, June of 2024, hasn't met since. If that advisory committee hasn't given approval for these items to be updated or for us to be talking about it, is it legally ethical for us to bring this before the city council? Probably not. Also, at the same time, the city manager last week went to the Bell County Commissioners, and he said that, oh, we have 6 million dollars available to fix the road. Again, tonight hasn't even occurred, and he's already given away 6 million dollars and acknowledged that they can have it. Okay, now let's ask some questions. Again, I'm just asking questions. Raise your hand on the city council if you receive political campaign contributions from anyone at the Downtown Merchants Association. Raise your hands if you have benefited financially or politically from a person who has any kind of association with the downtown district, and building the new city hall is basically going to help them. Silence, silence. Well, let's remind ourselves, one council member owns a bar in the downtown area, three council members work at a real estate agency that owns property in the downtown area, one city council member, this again back in June of 24, at the advisory bond committee, said that he was going to create a political action committee, a PAC committee.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran, your time is up. Moving on next to Mr. David Laws. Mr. Laws, bear with us just one moment, we've got a couple of responses, public statements for Mr. Alvarez. Councilmember Alvarez first.
Thank you, Mayor Pro temp. I just wanted to clarify again, I know I made this clarification earlier, we were talking about the priority lists, and the construction of Mohawk was the section to the west, not to the east. The section to the west, there's currently homes already built, and those homeowners who live there currently only have one way in and out of their subdivision, so this is going to solve a lot of their issues that they've been asking for. So this is not to build new houses, this is to solve an existing issue. And the second, I believe we should all want this on the ballot. If we're here truly for the will of the people, how do we know the will of the people without an election? So whether you're for it or against it, if you believe the majority are against it or for it, whatever way, the only way we're going to know is to have it go to the ballot and let the voters decide. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez, and Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro temp, for recognizing me as the representative for District Four, for West Colleen. I do want to specify that that Mohawk Drive extension is not for the addition of houses, but to solve an access issue for my constituents there. There are over 600 homes in this particular subdivision, and they've gone without a secondary form of access since the development was constructed. This road will tie in Castle Gap, Guadalupe, and Brushy Creek, allowing direct access to Bunny Trail. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for those comments. And Mr. Laws, we're ready for you, sir.
Hello, council. Pertaining to OR 25004 and RS 250119, you want to issue a bond in the amount of 151 And we don't pay that off for another 30 years? At a total of almost 300 million dollars? If you get a 5% loan, you want my grandchildren to pay for what your vanity building? Citizens of Colleen, when you see this on the ballot, vote no. It is a waste of money. Waco has a good plan. Colleen's plan is not good. City Council has the opportunity to devote ARPA, A-R-P-A, to fix this building. But you decided a comedy club was a better use of money? What other pet project do you plan for next? We need this building fixed first. I have two quotes. "If the freedom of speech is taken away, then dumb and silent, we may be led like sheep to the slaughter." By George Washington. So, if you state your opinion, it's free speech. So, if you state your opinion, it's free speech, but if I state mine, it's hate and intolerance. I forgot, that's how it works. Thank you.
Mr. James Sills.
How are y'all tonight?
Welcome.
It's good to see you all again. So, I just have a couple of things. One, Featherline, obviously, you know, come to grace here. It's good news to see that on the project to get funded. I can't thank Councilman Solomon and Councilwoman Cobb enough for championing that effort and bringing that home. You know, we started in March, I think there was two people at that P&amp;Z for that rezoning case, and from March to now is a pretty remarkable progress. So, you know, I don't have anything negative to say about that. You know, we've been working with the county to improve the intersection and going into the high school as well, so that improvement is coming up. And then KISD will probably be releasing the approval of the sidewalk between JDA Middle School and CHS here in the next month or so. So, tremendous progress in that area, but I think, you know, bringing that home, it's really important of this, right, these four minutes. And, you know, I think just, please, continue to respect people's journeys, whether they come to this dais or any other way to take this path, to talk to you. It's really important to them, right? If they step to this podium, it means something. As far as city hall, so, you know, I'm not for it or against it, right? I think, I just want to echo what Councilman Segarra said, is you have to educate the public. I think that is by far the most important aspect of what you're going to be going into in May. You know, I posed some questions just on my own, but, you know, some things that I would recommend that you could address to help people, you know, how many unique visitors visit the city hall and the departments right now? Right? So, how many unique visitors do you get a month at those locations? So, if you have a town of 160,000 and only 10% actually visit those buildings, you have to convince the other 90% of why there's a need. Secondly, is, you're stating that there will be additional revenue brought in by people coming to this location. Have you conducted surveys for people that visit now? Have you asked them, do they visit other businesses downtown after they've come here? So, if they come to city hall, they go to water department, whatever, are they staying downtown? Are they shopping? Are they spending money? Right? Those metrics would help your argument to state, look, when they come here, they're doing other business, they're spending money, their sales tax revenue, so you're generating that. And then finally, so, you know, 30 years, 20 years, whatever, we all know it's just not a $155 million project, right? So, with interest, could be over $200 million. But the biggest thing is, what's the return of investment for the citizens? Right? What is this doing for us? Right? I understand local business owners, I understand your staff, this council, totally understand and agree with all of that, but that's a very small percentage of the population. So, for everyone else, what's that return on investment? You know, show the maintenance savings that you're going to generate, show the downtown revenue that could occur, projected. You know, if you're reallocating business space, what are the property tax increases? So, I would just really highly suggest that those metrics are brought forward to educate the public moving forward. Appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sills. Councilmember Alvarez?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp, and thank you, Mr. Sills, for those comments. I think you brought up a very important point, and that is, you know, the alternative, I believe, as we've discussed in the past, what happens if this goes, obviously, this will go to the voters, if the voters say, "No, this is not what we want." What is the contingency? Well, the contingency is, obviously, the city stays where they are, and we invest the money in bringing these old buildings back up to current standards. That's probably in the neighborhood of $100 million. And then that does not account for any additional office space for future growth for employees. You know, we cannot, I mean, you can add on, but that figure does not include that. So, just something to keep in mind, you know, the money will get spent either way, so really, I think the question to the voters will be, do you want it in a new building, or do you want it in fixed-up old buildings? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. And then also, I just wanted to state that this is not, I keep hearing the reference of Vanity Project, I just want to make sure that we're abundantly clear that this was presented to council some years back, and then in 2022, some years ago, the council decided to take the directive from the constituents to at least explore the options. Then in January 9 of '23 and March 20 of '23, we also took another step to research with the citizens to get feedback on this project. So, this is not something that has just manifested in the air, it's been going on for several years since '22, but even conversations and talks prior to them. Thank you. Councilmember Cobb?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we've went over our agenda and a lot of information, we've heard a lot of things. I was challenged, and I'm going to give the same challenge that was given to me, to our constituents, can I do that? I can give you a challenge, and the challenge was, Mrs. Cobb, I want you to do three things. I said, "What three things could I do that I have not done?" And they said, "We want you to walk justly, in justice, to have mercy, have mercy on people that you meet, have mercy on the things that you hear, have mercy on persons who are working their hardest, and lastly, to walk humbly." They said, "Humbly with your God." They were getting on me because I had said some words in a meeting that I should not have said, but I tell you what, that's something that we should all do. As a councilwoman, we respect every person on this dais, respect everything that every person in this room say.
Thank you, Councilmember Cobb, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to add on, in terms of the city hall, we've got to remember that our city, I think we're right at like 43 buildings that we have, and we're just consolidating, you've got to remember, this is also not only for the citizens, but for our staff to come, and the citizen will benefit by coming to like a one-stop shop. Right now, our citizens go different buildings. With one city hall, like we've seen, we went and visited quite a few city halls in city our size and smaller. We have cities that are smaller than us, that they have consolidated their buildings, and they have a huge city hall. Cedar Hill, for example, 70,000, but they consolidated all of their departments into one building that it would benefit the citizens, that where they can just come down to.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon, your time is up, yes, sir.
My time is up?
Just one minute.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Temp. Yeah, just as a reminder to the citizens, there's an absolute need for city hall, there's a need to consolidate space, the city is only growing, and it's going to be more expensive in the future, business decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Mr.?
Can I ask the council for a minute? I didn't end in the correct sentence.
Counsel, do we want to authorize a minute for Councilmember Cobb? Want to yield a minute? You want to yield a minute? Thank you.
The only thing that I wanted to say, that was all going to one point, we do need a city, we do need a city hall. Sometimes we don't see what we need, but when we've done accessibility, we've walked justly, we looked at the points, we looked at everything, we're having mercy, we're looking at some things that maybe we couldn't look over, but it's not going to work. But most importantly, we're humbly asking you, we're not throwing it down in your own throat, we want you to go into one building, get your stuff done, and then just go home if you need to go home, or you can stick around if you want to, maybe we'll have some chairs, who knows? But we need, not we want, and that's what I would like for you all to take a minute to take a look at.
Thank you, Councilmember Cobb.
Thank you.
Mr. Sean Price? Sean, no, sir, no, sir, we can't scream out in the middle. Mr. Sean Price?
Good evening, city council. Mayor Pro Temp, nice to see you in the main chair. Kind of misunderstood the left's out and outs when you didn't announce that the mayor wouldn't hear, so I was a little confused. I didn't know if something, if she had resigned or something like that, so I apologize.
That would be public record, sir, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Price.
So, y'all know me. You know, I'm all about spending, right? You're spending, and you're incorrect with your assessment of $100 million to repair this building. On our own record, it's $17 million was the estimate. So, that was the estimate, you said $100 million, but, you know, to refit this building, it was $17 million to address the issue that's going on up in the second floor. So, now, that's just on the records, and maybe I'm reading that wrong, maybe it's just the estimate, right? But I think that what we do with discarding history is bad, I think that we should keep the history. If this is our, if we took this high school and we turned it into our city hall, because we turned our city hall into a police department, because we turned this into the city hall from a high school, right, because we like the aesthetics of the building, right? It shows our character, our city, this is us. What's wrong with it? You want to toss it away and go and build something new? We don't do that with any other government facilities, we kept the FBI building, we kept, we keep all these buildings, right, all in DC and stuff like that, we keep all these major buildings that were already planned, these are our ideas, this is the history of Colleen, right? Why can't we invest in that instead of rip it down, or let's just go build something new? There is a strategic element to our diverse city, and that's our uniqueness, is that we're not a one-stop shop, we're not a Circle K or 7-Eleven city hall. This is our unique character, we're Fort Hood, Fort Cavazos, we have history. How about keep it? How about invest in that and show that to our people, that we care about where we came from and where we're going? Yes, add to this building, make it newer, give it more, right? I understand about consolidating some of the other buildings, that's great, let's do that, but let's not forget where it all starts from, right here, where we come to meet every week, or every other week now. Because I think if we're going to spend $90 million, or $105 million, or $150, you know, for something else, right, I'd rather spend it for this right here. That's just me, you know? This is our infrastructure that we paid for, that's going to be here and represent, and we want to pass it on to our kids. So, I think there's stuff there. And then, second, I would like to add for the, speak for and advocate for families in crisis. Yeah? We got homeless. We got almost 4,000 homeless vets in Texas, we got 1.4 million in the entire country right now. I get it, but how about let's invest in our citizens? Get the mental health, get the facilities that they need, and maybe put it in the budget and have oversight. We got good people that work in this building that can do oversight for the budgeting, right? That's just my thought. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Councilmember Alvarez?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. I wanted to clarify that my statement of $100 million was not for this building alone, it was for the collective of the buildings that would be unified in this combined services new building. And ultimately, as you stated, that we're simply giving the taxpayers an option. If they don't want the new building, then they're going to vote no for it. No harm, no foul, we'll take your money and we'll fix up the old buildings, just like you said. So, we're listening to you, we're going to you with the options, and you are ultimately going to tell us, you want the new or you want the old? Regardless, nobody's saying we're going to throw away the old buildings and discard them, downtown's part of a heritage preservation area, so these buildings will continue to exist, it's whether or not they're going to continue to exist for this purpose. So, again, the choice is going to be the voters and the taxpayers, we're simply giving you an option. Thank you.
Well said, Councilmember Alvarez. Councilmember Adams?
I just want to confirm, this building is on the historical registry, correct, Mr. Gable?
I'd like to remind the audience to please keep your voices down to a slight whisper, please step outside of the chambers during the dais conversation. Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
This building is on the historical registry, so by law, it can't be just torn down, we can repurpose it, correct?
Well, I'd rather have Wallace come answer that question to be more, because it can get a little complicated, but there aren't any, we're no, have never been plans to tear it down.
Right.
And there she is, she knows far more about historic preservation than I do.
Yes, sir. The National Register designation for the city hall building is not regulatory in any way, so it's simply honorary, there is no regulatory rule that it can't be tore down.
But I think we might commit to not doing it, but thanks. The other piece, it was mentioned about the ordinance, I was sending an email, I just want to remind people, items that are on the charter can only be changed by a charter amendment and not by ordinance of this council.
Yes, sir, there was a reference to recall, and the council should have changed the ordinance. Well, there is no ordinance, it's the charter, and only the people can change the charter.
Thank you, and I just want to make sure it doesn't get lost in translation, that we said there was no intention, there was never discussion to tear this building down, just want to be abundantly clear there. Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
I'm good.
You're good to go, okay, thank you. Councilmember Boyd?
Thank you. I can appreciate the desire to preserve the history of the building, I can see where you're coming from with that, as well as highlighting Fort Cavazos. Perhaps with the new city hall, we can find funding in the future to turn this into a museum, highlight the city on the first floor, highlight the school district on the second floor, highlight Fort Cavazos on the third floor. There are different ideas and options that probably do exist to also preserve this building in its natural state, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, ma'am. Good evening.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Temp, Council, my name is Kristi Willbanks. On item number five regarding the issuance of certificate of obligation for capital projects, I noticed on the presentation under the priority project list, it shows as follows, Featherline Drive, Mohawk Drive, Chaparral Golf Course, and the Fire Station 5 rebuild. But at the city council meeting on September 17 of '24, Agenda Item Number 35 under Discussion Items, discuss and consider proposed 25 bond projects. The city council voted unanimously on following project lists for the certificate of obligation, Featherline Road, Fire Station 5, Veterans Park, and Mohawk Drive. The Veterans Park development was taken out, and the Chaparral Road project and the Golf Course project were added. The issue I have here is that from October until today, there has not been another discussion at a city council meeting regarding changing and approving the CEO project list. When was this discussed and approved? Was it in a backroom deal, which the mayor has stated that meetings do happen like this? I do approve of the list, except for the golf course at $3 million. I think that money could be better spent more wisely within our city. While the CEO project list now shows the Chaparral Road project, a week ago, was a... the CEO project list now shows the Chaparral Road project, a week ago was a meeting regarding this project. The meeting was with the Bell County Commissioners Court at their workshop. I was there, and I was concerned that not one city council member, nor the mayor, was present to listen or offer advice at this meeting. The city manager, Mr. Cagle, started, stated next week at our council meeting, we will have 6 million. Does he have authority to speak on this on behalf of the city council when this item has not been voted on yet? The vote has not happened, and he's already stating basically that it has. Was this another backroom deal, and even if the vote happens and passed, the funds would not be in hand until April 2025? This road project has been a hot topic recently. Why was there no council member present or there to represent the city? On item number nine, ordering the May 3 special election for the purpose of holding a bond election. Personally, I oppose this bond election. I believe that there is more important things in our city that need attention and fixed than this new city hall building. The 155 million for vote does not come close to what it would total cost, which the new city hall, which in the potential bond projects packet, is estimated cost of 66 million. Are we just going to have general obligation bond elections every couple of years to get this project completed? On this bond election, the Exhibit B voter information document, I suggest that we break down the figures and show the voters how the numbers came about. For example, how did we get to the 306 million figure? Our citizens are not bankers or specialists when it comes to a meritous size calculations. On the back of the Exhibit B, this could be explained so the voters know how we ended up with these figures for full transparency. Thank you for your time and your considerations.
Thank you. Mr. Cagle, I'm going to turn this over to you, but I just want to, if you could, please just clarify, because I too had several calls and concerns expressed regarding the enterprise fund. I know we've already said it, we've explained it, but I think obviously it's worth saying again. Now, the enterprise fund is a funding mechanism that was created for the golf course, for golf course projects, directly basically where it's funding itself. Is that correct in general?
That's correct, similar to the water and sewer fund. The golf course is operated and paid for by the golfers. So if we were to issue 3 million dollars in debt, make the golfers pay for it, and then spend it on a street, that doesn't, that doesn't seem fair, doesn't seem right. It, we have an aging asset there. At the meeting the lady referenced, we didn't talk about the utility debt either that's coming, that's coming up later in the year. It's not, that was not all encompassing.
Okay. I just want to make sure I was clear on that, that that fund for the golf course was created as a mechanism for the golf course to support golf course projects?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, understood. And go ahead, Mr. Cagle. Thank you.
And heard a lot of comments tonight about the Commissioners Court meeting. The city engineer and I went over there to convince the county to use the 3 million they'd set aside to contribute to the final engineering, so we can get something going on Chaparral. The comment I made was, yes, this is on the agenda. I didn't say it was approved. What I was trying to show the county was, 70% of the road is in Bell County, and the city of Colleen is taking a majority of the cost. And I was using that as an example of what the commitment that the city of Colleen is making, and just asking the county, could you at least put the 3 million that you've set aside and help us get this engineering done, so we can move forward like everyone wants? So I didn't speak for the council. I told them it was on the agenda. I think that it is very clear that it hadn't been approved. If it's not approved, I don't know what we'll do on Chaparral Road. And I don't, we dealt with the golf course issue, and I'm, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Condes Cooper? I'm sorry, Councilmember, excuse me, madam, I apologize. Councilmember Michael Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I just want to contribute to what Mr. Cagle was saying. We hire as a council the city manager to run the city, if you will, and we trust that you are doing that and have done that well. Perhaps some of us couldn't be there to be a part of that meeting, but we do appreciate you being there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Condes Cooper, thank you.
Good evening. How are y'all? My name is Condes Cooper. Being in this room kind of turns my spirit, but Romans 12:14 says, "Bless those who hate me and not curse them." So in my Texas Southern hospitality fashion, bless their heart. I am here to speak on behalf of the Downtown Colleen Merchants Association. Just had some questions in reference to the homeless shelter, and just some of the issues that we are facing as we do continue to grow. Again, the numbers show for themselves as how many new businesses are down here. And so I think constantly speaking against hard-own people, when you say support your citizens, is counterproductive. I did a small, a real quick digital audit for the Friends in Crisis. It does show that they don't have any social media presence. There are several nonprofit organizations that are in the city that constantly come downtown to set up on different corners to feed the homeless. And so I'm wondering if possibly partnering with those other organizations, as we are also trying to get them off of every corner, and partnering with those organizations, especially when we have the Soup Kitchen downtown and the Colleen Food Care Center. I know of the Divine Nine Associations in central Texas, that a lot of their community initiatives are for those particular purposes. And so I would love to sit down with you guys. I am a marketer. And so for anybody that says, "I'm always everywhere," it's because it's my job, it's what I'm good at, it's what I went to school for. I want to continue to grow in the area, and so that does happen to have, coming addressing certain issues, kind of like what are the resources that the Friends in Crisis is providing during the day? When they are released from those, from the facility, they can't check back in until a specific time in the day. And so they are congregating in the alleyways, they are congregating at Green Street Park that now can't be used. So we have an entire park that it can't be used by the citizens, and that is costing the city revenue, seeing as that park is a revenue generating pavilion. And so would definitely love to find out how we, the downtown business owners, can partner with the organizations that are doing so much for our city. I would just, you know, caution everyone to continue to find ways to work together in growing the area. We do need to grow. We talk about preserving historic buildings, but then say that we don't need to develop or invest in downtown Colleen. My building is 110 years old. My building is almost, if not as old as this building here. And so are many of the buildings on Avenue D. And so I feel, you know, kind of conflicted, because it only seems to be a certain, specific businesses that are mentioned when we talk about grant funding. CBDG grants go across downtown as well, and there are other minorities in the area, there are other ethnicities in the area, but it only seems to be, and I'm just going to say it because it's Black History Month, it only seems to be four in particular that keep getting mentioned. We are hardworking citizens. I am a native of this area. I have been committed to growing our city and our downtown area before I got a grant, before I was president of the Merchants' Association, before I was vice chair of the Downtown Advisory Committees, because I've committed to volunteering in my city. And so I implore everyone who has anything want to say about what and who gets the attention, to go ahead and sign up for those committees. If y'all have any questions, I look forward to working with you guys. Downtown Merchants' Association meeting is every Thursday. I ask that you guys all attend. We've got some great businesses coming. Again, The Brewery opens up at the end of February. We've got a Cigar Lounge opening up very soon. We've got a Latin Spot opening up also on Avenue C, and we are hard pressing for three, sorry, excuse me, three more restaurants who will be opening in the next 60 days. And so we ask for retail shops. If you guys are interested to come onto the area, this is me talking to the public now, let me know. I have a list of available buildings that are available for lease, and three that are available for sale. And so for anyone who cares about historic preservation, y'all come see me.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Includes our citizens' comments at this time. Okay, so now we're going to move forward on to our regular session. Council, keep in mind that we have three minutes, three times each to speak on each of these items. Madam Secretary?
Consent agenda. RS 25016, RS 25017, RS 25018, RS 25019, RS 25020.
Councilmember Adams?
Madam Mayor Protem, I move that we approve the consent agenda. That's where we are right now, right?
Thank you. Councilmember Solomon?
I second that.
So a motion to approve and a second by Councilmember Solomon for consent agenda. All in favor, vote yes. All opposed, no. Thank you. It looks like all votes are tabulated. We have six yeses on the consent agenda. Thank you. Madam, Madam Secretary?
Ordenses. OR 25002, "Consider an ordinance ordering the May 3, 2025, general election for the purpose of electing a council member for each of the four districts." The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance ordering the holding of an election in the city of Colleen, Texas, for the purpose of electing a council member for each of the four districts, providing for the filing of written application to have their names printed on the official ballot, specifying that the provisions of the general election law shall control all questions pertaining to such election, designating the polling locations, prescribing the contents of the official ballot, providing for compensation, and providing for the posting and publication of notice of election and containing miscellaneous provisions."
Council, Ms. Calco went over the details of this ordinance. Do we have any questions, sir? Do we need her to go back over the presentation? Councilmember Adams?
Madam Mayor Protem, I move that we approve OR-25-002.
Councilmember Sagara?
I second that.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Adams and a second by Councilmember Sagara. All in favor, vote yes. Any opposed, vote no. Looks like we have six in favor of OR 25-002. Madam Secretary?
OR 25003, "Consider an ordinance ordering the May 3, 2025, special election for the purpose of determining whether District 4 Councilmember Michael Boyd will be recalled." The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance ordering the holding of a special election in the city of Colleen, Texas, for the purpose of determining whether District 4 Councilmember shall be recalled, specifying that the provisions of the general election law shall control all questions pertaining to such election, designating the polling locations, prescribing the contents of the official ballot, providing for compensation, and providing for posting and publication of notice of election and containing miscellaneous provisions."
Council, Ms. Calco has gone over the details of this ordinance. Do we have any questions at this time? Councilmember Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. We have four minutes to speak, or three minutes, three times. What is the policy?
You have three minutes, three times each, sir.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'm going to request from the council to use my three minutes concurrently, and I don't plan to speak for 10 minutes, so don't, no one get concerned here. So I thought I'd take this opportunity to exercise my freedom of speech, given my God-given name is on the agenda today. It's a little different when your name's on the agenda, for those who haven't experienced it. As you know, considering this unique situation I find myself in, is it coming upon me to highlight important points for citizens to consider relating to this highly anticipated event, as a local newspaper would desire? And don't worry, I'll speak frankly on the matter. I give them plenty to write about in their tabloid, and maybe they can charge you guys more to read their bitter rebuttal. But to get to the point, upon those who spearheaded and championed this initiative, there exists an excitement and anticipation to bring down, if you will, one of the most productive and influential council members the city has seen, as suggested by many. It appears to be a goal of the petitioner to subject members of this diverse, dedicated, and visionary city council to recall, as is evident, this sham election petition currently underway, which now targets the mayor and our three at-large council members, unfortunately, ultimately wasting taxpayer dollars, expending staff time, and creating frustration amongst the citizenry, excuse me. The petitioner has proven to be a disgruntled, unelectable former council member with a history of making unsubstantiated claims to the public, a disrupting public meetings, being arrested and violating meeting decorum, and filing a frivolous lawsuit against a city council member. I would argue, excuse me, the source to not be a reputable or credible source of information relating specifically to this recall. It remains my understanding that signatures were widely collected on lies, false accusations, rumors, and preying on citizen frustrations. For example, using the construction of Bunny Trail, a totally unrelated petition item, as a catalyst amongst others to rapidly collect signatures. As everyone may recall, a citizen residing along Golden Gate Drive stood in front of this council and stated their interaction with a petitioner who stood at his doorstep rattling off unrelated citizen petition items in effort to gain his signature. Again, consider the source. Number two, consider the narrative. The, excuse me, the local newspaper which, whose coverage of city hall has become hazardous, would have readers believe that the District 4 Councilmember is absolutely deserving of recall, providing readers with a plethora of misinformation. With the city hall reporter's seemingly close relationship with the petitioner, coverage of this recall has become increasingly biased and unbalanced. I noticed the local newspaper has continuously printed unsubstantiated stories and rumors unrelated to this item stating in the original recall, only just to justify them with phrases like allegedly, likely, and my understanding. One example is an incredibly unsubstantiated story about a perceived conflict of interest relating to my commercial real estate work. I've also noted how my name is consistently printed, so conveniently as Councilman Michael Boyd, who is also facing recall in May. In the attempt to rebrand my efforts, I detect the seething tone in these articles designed to mischaracterize myself as a elected official. There's no stories to highlight all of the great improvements I've brought to District 4 with the support of this city council, or the effective advocacy on behalf of my constituents over the past several years, just a continued approach to sway voters into recalling a Colleen council member. Again, consider the narrative. Consider the facts. A petition specifically accuses the District 4 Councilmember of the following: willfully and intentionally ignoring and disregarding citizens, putting the safety of the public second, not following the comprehensive plan, public disrespect and silencing of citizens. In addition to the four statements being totally subjective, they're vague and not suggestive of how I perform as a leader. Furthermore, there remains no specific reference to evidence as substantiated reasons for this sham recall. Again, consider the facts. In the last part of my statement, as a perfect example of the newspaper misleading the public, and this is important, it should be made unmistakably clear that the voter approval of this recall would carry no weight on my current service or future service to the city of Colleen as a council member. Again, pass or fail, this recall will have zero effect on my service as a council member. This is because the petitioner effectively failed to submit those signatures by the proper deadline, affording myself the opportunity to serve a full, complete, entire term. For this, I would argue God was in my favor. Again, consider the reality. Ultimately, a myriad of citizens, constituents, never believed my name should have been associated with this recall, many of which reject the understanding of its existence. With everything said, and in acknowledgement of the recall election process outlined in the city charter, I make a motion to approve OR-25-003. Thank you.
Do we have a second to that motion? Councilmember Adams?
I have a second, and I have a question as well.
Go ahead, Councilmember Adams. Thank you.
So in the case, and a couple of citizens have asked, in the case of, well, we already know, if recall fails, then it's failed. If it passes, then what happens? Because Mr. Boyd is also on the ballot, and I think we need to put that out there, so that citizens are aware of that situation.
Would that be something for Ms. Clemmons to answer, please? Thank you.
The results of the general election will decide who's elected to the next term, '25 to '27. The results of the recall election will determine whether Mr. Boyd is recalled for the '23 to '25 term. They are not for the same term.
And with his term in the delection when we canvass?
Yes, as will everyone.
Okay, yes. Thanks. I just wanted to make sure.
As will all the district representatives.
I just want to make sure, because there's a lot of conjecture on that process. I just want to make sure because there's a lot of conjecture on that process and if we don't educate our residents, then we, we doing a, we doing a disservice. Thanks.
That's a good question. So we have a motion to approve OR twenty-five dash zero zero three made by Councilmember Boyd and a second by Councilmember Alvarez. All, I'm sorry, I'm, Councilmember Adams, excuse me. All in favor, please vote yes. Any opposed, vote We have five in support, yes, on OR twenty-five dash zero zero three, and one voting no. Councilmember Cobb, thank you. Madam Secretary?
OR twenty-five zero zero four. Consider an ordinance ordering the May third, twenty twenty-five special election for the purpose of holding a bond election. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance calling a bond election to be held in the city of Colleen, Texas, making provision for the conduct of the election and resolving other matters related to that election."
Thank you. Do we have any questions or would you like the presentation again on this particular one? Thank you. Seeing none, I've got Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, move that we approve OR two-five dash zero zero four.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Solomon?
Second that.
So we have a motion to approve OR twenty-five dash zero zero four by Councilmember Adams and a second by Councilmember Solomon. All in favor, please vote yes. Any opposed, vote Looks like we have all voting in favor of OR twenty-five dash zero zero four. Madam
DS twenty-five zero zero three. Discuss financial governance policy updates.
Looks like we've got Ms. Lorraine Luciano with us. Thank you.
Hi, hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor Proton, Council City Manager. So... Wait for my presentation.
It will be there in just a moment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, as stated, I'll be discussing the proposed changes for the financial governance policy, which includes, um, the investment policy. Little background information, financial governance policy is the comprehensive source for financial policies in the city, which includes the investment policy, and it must be adopted annually in accordance with Public Funds Investment Act. Um, the next six slides will outline the proposed changes for, um, the policy. In section eight, water and sewer rates, the policy change is to remove rates and only reference the tiers to which the water and sewer rates are billed and, billed at, and add the language that most currents, current rates are established in city ordinance effective October first of each year. The reason for this change is because, um, water and sewer rates are updated and in fact, October first of each year. However, the governance policy isn't updated and readopted until January, February time of each year. So we just want to reference, um, the ordinance that, um, is effective and, um, do away with that four-month discrepancy. Section nine, purchasing. We added or designate to allow the city manager to appoint a designate to assist in the approval of contract change orders. This aligns with the city's delegation of signature authority document. An additional change in the same section is to remove the sentence that states, "The city will move towards centralized purchasing in accordance with a plan to be established by the city manager." Um, the reason for this change is because the city has implemented centralized purchasing, um, with our new ERP system. Section nine, classification of operating expenditures, to remove support services, minor capital, and professional services, and added miscellaneous services and charges in order to align with the new chart of accounts that was created using Government Finance Officers Association's best practices. And section thirteen, capitali, capitalization threshold, the language to read, to be added, is intangible asset subscriptions if they meet a threshold of a hundred thousand dollars or more and are for a term more than two years. And to add, capitalization thresholds will be applied to individual items and bulk purchases if they meet a threshold of a hundred thousand dollars or more and their useful life is two years or more. Um, these changes will align with the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, uh, GASB ninety-six. And then section sixteen, investments, um, the pol, the proposed change is the city's investment policy is embedded within the financial governance policy under section twenty-three. This is just to make reference that the, that the investment policy is within the financial governance policy. And then section seventeen, computer data processing. Um, we would like to remove the language that user access levels to the city's financial system is to be implemented by the Information Technology Services Department and replace with language that IT is responsible for creating new users during the initial setup, but that both IT and the finance department can make changes to security groups and user account access groups as needed. Um, and this will align with the city's new ERP system as well. And then the next steps is to receive city council feedback and discuss financial governance policy, proposed changes at the February eighteenth city council meeting. Uh, the agenda for the meeting on the eighteenth will also contain a redlined copy of the financial governance policy. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Seeing none, I thank you, Ms. Luciano.
Thank you.
Get a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Adams?
Madam Mayor, Mayor Proton, I move that we adjourn.
I second that.
A second?
The other RA seconded.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. We do have a meeting immediately following this. Excuse me, all in favor, say, vote yes. Thank you. Uh, we do have a meeting following this immediately, uh, to discuss the Employee Benefits Trust. Will you move straight into that or do we need time? You need just a minute? Okay. We're going to give them about five minutes to get that set. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.